Coming. We're gonna go live.
7:01 in about. And I will open up, so just some online protocols. I see our participants are filing in in big numbers, which is great. If you're not speaking, we ask that you mute your microphone to prevent feedback and any background noises. So people who are speaking can be heard. And public, if you have a question, please use the Q and A. At the bottom of the screen to ask questions and I and other school committee members will keep an eye on that and answer questions. As we can, we will ask them live if it's appropriate, if we have, we will consolidate questions if appropriate. And sometimes we'll answer a quick answer right in the Q and A itself. So with that, are there any questions or comments that are not on the agenda tonight? That we can answer in public forum again, if you use the Q and A, we can address those now and as we go through the meeting. So I'm not seeing any open questions. So we'll jump to our information update and I'll let the superintendent start.
Thank you, Avery. Last, late last week, I participated in a meeting with about 26 of the Merrick Valley superintendents. Obviously, the focus of the meeting was on the reopening plan that is due to the state on July 31. A lot of anxiety among the superintendents in attendance, since we do not have all of the information from the state as of yet. We are all working on our plans. I would like to say that we're in good shape compared to every many other communities in terms of the progress of our plan. That we will be submitting to you, the school committee on the 27th of July for review. We will be getting it to you, we'll be sending it to you on the 24th. So that you will have several days to review it before the actual meeting. The next couple of days, the Mass Association of School Superintendents. Carrie will be attending virtually, I'll be hopping in and out virtually. That just, I have a lot of meetings and so I won't be able to spend the full day, either day at it. But there are some important components to that conference that we both want to hear. I want to remind the parents that on Wednesday night of this week, it's seven o'clock from seven to nine. We have the parent forum on the reopening, which is an opportunity. For our parents in the community to express their opinions, suggestions. I'm sure there'll be questions, some of which we can answer at this time, some of which we may not be able to answer this time, at this time, subject to additional guidance from the state. And on Thursday of this week, I will be having a forum for our staff in the school system at 1pm. And that notification will be sent out tomorrow morning to the staff, I've already notified them. That we will be having a forum this week with the time and and the day of the week to be determined. So we're looking forward to both forums to gain more information. I want to thank the parents, we've had an excellent return on the surveys with interesting results. At the present time, between 63 and I want to say 70% of parents feel that it would, they would send their child back to school. With the appropriate health and safety measures, so we'll, we'll present that once the survey time period and timeframe is closed, which will be next Monday, July 20. Then we will immediately send the survey results to you so that we can discuss those. At our upcoming meeting on the 27th of July. That's all I have for tonight.
Okay. So there is a quick question that popped up and it's actually a great segue because Carrie's up next. Have the results from the first survey been made public?
I don't think that we posted those anywhere, we just used those to understand what the appetite was from the parents. And it helped us begin our planning. And I think that this, since the commissioner's guidance on June 25th. This new survey has now given us the information that sort of in some ways trumps the old information. I, I'm certain we can make that public and post it somewhere if the committee and superintendent wish.
Okay. Superintendent, before we jump over, how do you parents sign up for Wednesday night? Is it, is there a link on the website? We want to make sure everybody has access.
Yes, yes, there is, there was a link that was sent out on Friday. And they can check our website, if anyone has a problem accessing it, please send an email to myself. And to Mike Wells, who was the IT director in Westford. But you could send an email to myself on nine also, if that is fast for you.
Okay. And the staff will have the proper link through your communication tomorrow to get to the staff forum.
That's correct, and as of this morning, we had about 600 community members who have signed up for Wednesday night's forum. That is probably, I mean, close to 650 to 700 right now.
Okay. We'll look forward to hearing. How that, well, we, we will all be attending as panelists, correct?
Yes, although, you know, Carrie and I and Ingrid and Courtney, you know, are certainly prepared. Based on the information that we have from the guidance document from the state. Prepared to answer as many questions as we possibly can, as I indicated, there may be some that we may not be able to answer because we don't have that complete information yet from the commissioner.
But this, you hope to this to be, well, we'll get to it a little later with the reopening, I think we won't stay here. Carrie, do you have updates?
I'm going to wait till new business, Avery.
Okay, how about Ingrid?
All right, I just wanted to give you a quick update regarding the procurement audit. So I submitted. I polled. All expenditures over $10,000 for FY19 and at that point midway through 20. Went through each one with the help of staff, Carrie and Courtney were, Colleen Wallace, Paul Fox were instrumental and the technology people. In helping identify what, what everything was, we submitted that about two weeks ago back to town hall. And have been responding just to questions of. And working closely with Eric Hydeman on that, just my high level takeaway is probably the biggest area for improvement is just documentation. And so that's just a learning process, many of it just because. Some of the people who procure these things no longer are with our district. You know, it's hard to say were quotes, you know, three quotes received. Were, you know, can these books be bought somewhere else? So I think that's just a learning process for us too, that we have to keep a file. So every time you say, okay, I'm going to continue with our. Munis software instead of bid it out every three years. We just have to write it down on a piece of paper and put it in a file. So, you know, there's some that definitely. Areas that could be more improved and I think we already have processes in place now. That I really feel that we can. Move forward positively between the requisition process that we've set up through the business office. And then the work that Paul Fox has done in the facilities department, so.
We've already made progress.
Yes, I really, I feel perfect, and we've done some training with leadership already. We did that right before COVID hit. We were expanding that, we actually had it all set up with town hall, they were going to run some procurement classes for us. And so, well, you know, when we're back, we'll pick up where we left off. So I, I think, like I said, it was a learning process for us all, and I think we really can move forward in a positive manner.
Bill, I saw your hand, you wanted to.
Well, I was just going to, I was just going to make a distinction. And Ingrid, Ingrid knows this, she. And that distinction is we have to solicit for a certain range, 10 to 50,000, we solicit three bids. We don't necessarily have to receive three bids, if we receive one bid, that complies with the law, as long as we solicit quotes from at least three vendors.
Well, and documented, so soliciting and it's not a bid even, it's a quote can be a Google search. So again, it's a documentation, so it's, it's, you know, taking a screenshot or printing out, okay. I, you know, looked at, and I'm just going to make up vendors, you know, Amazon and Target and Walmart, so.
Okay, but it's a matter of printing that search and putting it in the file.
Yes.
That's correct.
You know, everyone who procures is just needs to really maintain a procurement holder so that when, so we have that documentation.
Okay, and I see Gloria has a hand up.
Yeah, Ingrid, I just wanted to check, I mean, I know there's some very technical information here and I know we've got a very full agenda tonight. If committee members have follow up questions about this, can they email you, what's the best way to handle that?
Email or I'm out of the office for a couple of days, but you know, I'll be back and happy to take a phone call to whichever is easier.
Fantastic, thanks.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to get a quick update of, you know, we're continuing to close out the year. That it's a process that takes about a month and a half. This is the normal process, just waiting for all the bills to come in. And I'm still anticipating. Needing less circuit breaker, as you know, the FY20 budget was developed with the assumption of using 700,000 plus in current year circuit breaker funds. I feel strong, I feel confident that we will not have to use that much. And I'm hoping that it's a, it's a, well, it will be a lower number and I hope it's a much lower number. So as, as we finish closing out the year, I'll have a better idea. But I'm feeling that by using, as you all know, less circuit breaker this year will be setting ourselves better, up better for next year. As we know, next year has just a huge question marks regarding state aid. And I think as much as we can do now to. Allow us to function as normally as we would. And then hopefully. Be able to utilize any of the state and federal funds regarding COVID for those purposes. But that, you know, our normal operations are as intact as possible. So those are my goals and unless otherwise directed. That's the direction I will be moving to close out the year. And just quickly, there had been some questions regarding what COVID funds that we as the school system have already received. Through the first CARES Act that, or the third, I guess CARES Act that was passed in April. Westford received an allocation of 20,000. We have until beginning of August to apply for that. And I think Carrie has that earmark for Lexia, which is some software that will, that Carrie can explain much better than I could ever attempt to. But I believe helps with remote learning. And then the next distribution, there is. Some indication that we will receive up to $225 per student, which will benefit Westford much more than the first. Allocation, which was tied to Title One funding and we're not a Title One community, which is why we only got 20,000. But the state is still putting out the guidelines of how and how much and when to apply for these funds. And that's it.
Okay, any questions for Ingrid? Okay. Courtney, did you want to have a special ed update or you just going to speak to things in the reopening?
Um, I can do an update right now if that's okay.
That would be great, I know we had talked earlier, so I don't want to. Let you get lost in the.
All right. Okay, great. So real quickly, prior to getting into COVID. Earlier, I shared with the committee that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education had identified Westford. As having some disproportionality with special education services. And they were primarily concerned with the amount of white students that we have that have been identified as specific learning disability. And as a result, they are charging us with. Taking 15% of our IDEA fund, which I know that Ingrid has mentioned several times in her budget presentation. And channeling that money into what, how do we help rectify this over identification? Of having students with specific learning disabilities. So we are, it's nice to report on something other than COVID. And we got a little bit of excited about being able to offer some really great professional development this summer. We have had an overwhelming response from our teachers, which just tells us that, you know, the teachers are thirsty to get back into business. And to really get into curriculum and instruction and helping students out to the best of, you know, our abilities. So the first one, we've partnered, I partnered with Jen Traverso. To offer an opportunity in which teams at the elementary level will consist of one special education teacher. A general education teacher, the literacy specialist and an administrator from each elementary school. And that team will explore the latest evidence based practices as it relates to literacy. So Melissa Orkin is the presenter and she is going to be guiding this, these teams through that opportunity. It will consist of two live Zoom meetings with some independent study work in between. So again, just really thankful for the overwhelming response that we received from our elementary staff. Who are willing to work over the summer. To strengthen our knowledge in the area of literacy. The second professional development that we are offering will just target our special education teachers and the administrators. Who are chairing our special education team meetings. And that opportunity will be led by two of our, two, two of our school psychologists, Julia Mazika and Melissa Werner. And they will take the opportunity to. Revisit our understanding and make, recalibrate our understanding of what constitutes a specific learning disability opposed to any other disability. So we're getting responses now, I just put that out to staff today. And getting a great response from all of the special education staff members from K through 12. Preschool won't be included in that and some of our other populations in which specific learning disability doesn't seem to tread into their territory. That's not going to include it, but I thought that I would share a little bit of positive news other than some of the COVID. Fallout that we've been dealing with. Unfortunately, one of the COVID fallouts comes with some news that I shared with our CPAC officers several weeks ago. We were notified, the district was notified that Crotchet Mountain School in, located in Greenfield, New Hampshire, will be closing as of November 1st. Now, Crotchet Mountain is a 766 approved school for both day and residence. And this news is just absolutely devastating to the three families in which it involves. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention because although all of us have been dealing with our own fallout from COVID. These individual families haven't been able to see their children since March. They literally went into lockdown and knew that in order to protect from the virus. They couldn't allow students to have visitors or to go out on visitation. So this impact for our students who are in residential is, looks a little bit different than it has for the majority of our district. And just wanted to bring that to your attention. We are working with families to make the appropriate referrals and it is our sincere hope that we're able to make some seamless transitions. And avoid any further stress and anxiety that this is causing for some of those family members. And one other update is around preschool. There have been some public announcements in which some districts are deciding. To dismantle their integrated preschool program. As a result of trying to figure out how to reopen school. This has been a discussion at the state level. And the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is strongly encouraging us to maintain our integrated preschool model. So that is what we are doing at this time. However, I do plan on issuing a joint letter that would come from me as well as the elementary principals. Because as you know, each of those preschool classrooms will be in our K to two schools next year. And it's just going to go out to our families who have students that participate via tuition. Our role model students and the typical students that are coming in as part of our integration. And the reason why I feel compelled to at least get that message out now is that we really don't know exactly what school is going to look like. And if we go into a hybrid model and if we go into a remote model, it will also affect them. Now, some families decide to opt into a preschool program because developmentally, they're looking for that educational and social experience for their children. Others are looking at it and depending on us to be their daycare so that they can go to work. And so. I just want to be as clear as possible that. At any given time, with many unknowns, many balls in the air, we could be looking at, yes, I know you signed up for five mornings. We can't offer those five mornings any further. So similar to the way we had to just shut down in March, I know it also affected the daycares. We just need to be cognizant of that and if families can't ride out that. Unknown with us, which I would certainly understand for reasons why, I mean, I was a single mom that relied on preschool for daycare for my child. Then hopefully this will give them a little bit of opportunity to have a Plan B or a Plan C in place. At, but again, at this time, our, our hope is that we are providing an integrated preschool model. That our students who are in our sub separate preschool programs, both our developmental classroom. As well as the reach program will certainly continue.
Courtney, one question that's come in online is that. The state has deemed that we have too high a percentage of students who are diagnosed with learning disabilities. And therefore are in need of special education services. Does this mean that students who are in need of special education services will be denied because we've met some kind of quota?
Absolutely not, absolutely not. In fact, you know, I was surprised by the department's. Finding that we were part of this club and that they were that concerned about that piece of data. Because there are many different reasons why a student would be found eligible for an SLD. And other exclusionary factors of why somebody might not be found eligible. But we are not, we don't have a tally game going on and we certainly will, will not continue with that. But it is important to make sure that we are fully calibrated throughout the district to make sure that, you know, each one of our teams understands. What constitutes a specific learning disability, what might be an emotional disability, what other category they might fall into. And certainly, you know, two prongs that are applied to every finding would be, is there a disability, yes or no? And does that disability impact their ability to access the general education curriculum? Therefore requiring specially designed instruction, not just a little bit of extra help, but specially designed instruction to get them to that point. So. There is no directive from the state nor from the district. That we are too high in any way, we are just making sure that we're doing due diligence to understand. What constitutes the specific learning disability and then how to move forward in a responsible way.
Okay, other questions, thank you. Other questions for Courtney on. The ever changing world of special education, yes, Minkin.
So I, I need some understanding, so you, you mentioned something about the IDEA fund. So can you explain that, is there any like financial impact to the district?
So the IDEA funding is the federal grant that comes in each year to each district. We typically get around 915 to 940, $100,000 per year. The majority of our funding is used for salaries. For both teachers and teaching assistants and other related service providers. With a small amount of money that goes towards consultation fees and a small amount of money that would go towards supplies. So because of this identification from the state. The state is saying that we will be taking 15% of that chunk of money. And we will be using it towards our efforts to remedy this issue around specific learning disabilities. So some of that is going to look like professional development. We also started to explore other ways to support on the middle school and high school level. However, I'm going to push the pause button on sharing any of that information because right now I don't know what school is actually going to look like. So some of the positions in the support that we were hoping to bring in. To use that money to kind of help mitigate those issues that might lead to a student having. A referral for special education. We're just going to put on pause for right now until we find out exactly what school looks like and how best to support.
So, so, so what, what does that mean, the 15% money will be taken away or be redirected?
It is going to be redirected and this was information that we did receive very early on in the school year and shared out with school committee. So Ingrid has been on top of it in terms of knowing what that impact is going to look like to the budget. Knowing that the majority of our money is spent, I mean, over $800,000 is spent towards those salaries. And it's always a shell game that we play every year anyway, because that money. Inches up, and when I say inches, you know, maybe you'll get a couple thousand dollars more, but it's certainly not enough to help us. With the increases that we have just in a COLA each year or for any kind of step increases. So we're always playing that shell game of. You know, who, who are the staff members that will be paid directly out of that grant? Are there any other questions?
So. So yeah, there's a quick question from the FinCom member who's trying to understand. So the state isn't taking 15% of our IDEA funds, they're asking us to redirect that to this specific. Problem that they have identified.
Correct.
That we may or may not understand is a problem. It's more that they've identified it and they want us to address it. So that we're not losing money, we're just redirecting where it was and Ingrid was aware of it. And we, we accommodated that change, that, that shift in piles, so to speak, in the budget process.
Right, so it, it comes out to about two staff members.
Okay.
So we did, because Courtney had that information early enough in the budget process. Accommodate, you know, put those two back into the budget, knowing that we wouldn't have the grant funds to pay for it.
Perfect. Other questions, I think that's, thank you for those updates, that's helpful. All right, students, do you have anything you want to add before and then we'll do school committee updates? Or are you just here to participate in future conversation? Since school's not in session, you probably don't have a whole lot to share. All right, school committee updates, anybody have anything? And we haven't really been doing subcommittees yet, so. All right, then we're going to jump. Bill, I'm going to hand it over to you so you can introduce Jeff and Jim and we're going to be discussing the Grey Ghost mascot.
Yes, and particularly for Valerie, since she's new to the committee. You have Jim Attinelli, as you know, the principal of the high school and Jeff Bunyan, who was our athletic director. They, along with Jeff Hall, will be discussing the issue of the West Academy Grey Ghost mascot. Which has some connection to a, a former. TV program and individual or character that could have some. uh, could have some racial uh, implications. And so we wanted to bring this to you to discuss it openly, uh, talk about the process. Uh, give you a cost estimate of what it would cost to change uh, the mascot and, you know, perhaps a, a recommendation or two. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jim and Jeff and um, and Jeff Hall.
I was trying to coach Jeff Hall, who's uh, who's new to this. So Jeff, you need to go on to the left-hand corner and, and unmute yourself and then start the video. Hopefully you can see this. But again, welcome Valerie uh, to the committee. And uh, it's great to see my two students here. Hey Brian, hey Hannah, miss you guys and uh, hope to see you soon. So uh, I'm just gonna give Jeff a second here. I know he's been welcomed in.
Jim?
Right, hello Jeff.
Can you hear me?
Hear you, yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
You don't have to look at me.
Uh, welcome Jeff as the, as uh, you know, former state representative, president of the Westford Academy trustees and a great historian for the community of Westford. So Jeff, thanks for being here this evening with, with us.
Class of nineteen sixty-six. Um, but thank you, Jim, for the opportunity. Let me give you a background I can. I don't know if you folks received um, the article from October of nineteen fifty-nine, The Lowell Sun. Um, it was written by Ginny Lou Bellinger, who was a sudden student reporter for Westford Academy at the time. And it reads, the first paragraph, Westford Academy Football Team was officially named the Gray Ghost at the pep rally by Principal Joseph E. Joyce. As a result, the election was held earlier in the day by the Student Council. Uh, the titles of Lancers and Eagles were also on the ballot, but Gray Ghost won. But why Gray Ghost? Well, no one knows for sure. Um, there were a couple of things that were going on at the time. There was a popular TV show called The Gray Ghost about a Confederate um, Colonel. Um, and some feel that the name might have come from that. Another hypothesis is that Coach uh, Chet Steele at the time had viewed his football team wearing their new gray uniforms and on a foggy afternoon and said they looked like gray ghosts. A third um, theory, and this is one that, that uh, I can kinda verify it's like spoke to someone this morning, is that there was, there is a spirit on the third floor of the Roden Bush Community Center. And there has been for some time. And as I was driving through Granville on Broadway uh, this morning, I saw a member of the class of nineteen sixty. And I asked him, he did not remember the election, he did not remember how we came about, did not remember the TV show, but he certainly remembered the ghost that was at the Roden Bush School. Um, most theories are plausible, all, all three theories are plausible because the Gray Ghost TV show was popular with the kids at the time. Coach Steele may have thought that the team looked like Gray Ghost in the Academy Gridiron. But it's hard to know which is, because there's really no documentation. But what I can tell you and what I do know, because I've been on the sidelines of football games for six decades now, in the stands of basketball games, I've been at wrestling meets. Um, I've been on the um, committee for the Westford Academy Athletic Hall of Fame. And I can tell you, I never saw the symbol of the Gray Ghost used in any way. It never carried a Confederate flag, a rebel hat. In fact, the uh, original ma- mascot was Casper the Friendly Ghost. And that was the symbol for it. In the original Gray Ghost, only the name for the football team. It became the ta- the uh, mascot for the school, someone there along the line. Since its inception, the Gray Ghost mascot has get, has always been a ghost. Um, the uh, and it is Casper the Friendly Ghost with the teens of nineteen fifty-nine. Now I've got the name, is open to debate, but it's never known for sure. One of the things that I wanna emphasize about the symbol of the ghost is about two weeks after the um, they named the ghost, they had a, they had a, the, the, put on a um, dance and it was entitled The Graveyard Hop. So they always emphasized the ghost. They were not memorializing or honoring um, the Confederate general. And I think that's where some people, you know, take offense with the symbol. Jim?
Well, I concur. Uh, you know, I sent the memorandum to Avery um, yeah, into the Western School Committee in regards to the information we've collected um, in regard to the theories behind um, how this mascot came to be. Uh, the original mascot was the Black Knights uh, from around nineteen fifty-four to nineteen fifty-eight, colors were black and white. And at some point that changed. Now whether it was, it can, uh, a contributing factor was uh, Mosby's Rangers due to Colonel John Rose, Mosby, who was known as the Gray Ghost, G R A Y. But over the years, it has morphed into G R E Y, um, the color gray. Um, and that's how it's, it's developed over the period of time. Uh, Bob Conley was uh, an athletic director. Before Jeff Bunyan, who's the current athletic director, and his son uh, was a great artist and and created the current mascot that we have. Um, and that's the symbol that's on a lot of our clothing and so forth. So um, you know, the theories are out there and um, my question is to the committee is, is, you know, how do you wanna move forward? There's just not a lot of evidence that indicates there's one specific factor that uh, contributes to the name. And so I know there's a lot of great history. Westford Public, Westford Academy is the sixth oldest public high school in the country. And uh, we have some great archives. And I was able to dig into the archives last week and find some original contracts between the Westford Academy trustees, original trustees and who, who purchased uh, and built uh, the first academy at no cost to the community of Westford. Uh, so it's rich in tradition and um, so you know, if there are some questions uh, in this, and there's a way to uh, to move this away from a symbol that's, you know, completely inappropriate, of course, uh, I think we should try and, try and mitigate that situation in some way, shape or form, whether that's working with students, uh, students in the committee and so forth. Um, I did have a conversation today back and forth through email with a former student of ours, Shane O'Neil, who shared his concerns uh, before with me. And um, again, connected to the one story and not connected to some of the additional research that Jeff and I have both done. In fact, I had a great conversation with Sherri Steele, who is the daughter of Chet Steele, who was a coach back during that time. And um, she reached out to her brother who lives in Flor- Florida, he's now seventy-three years old. And, and over the weekend, he, she shared with me that there could have been a show called Swamp Fox. Uh, it was a Disney uh, s- uh, series. And so I watched two episodes of that and never, never heard uh, the connection to Gray Ghost. I think that perhaps, I'm not a hundred percent sure, and I, I reached out to Sherri again, asking maybe um, her brother was confused that it was Mosby's Rangers, because that's the only, it's in a similar it's in a similar timeframe. So you know, whether it's, you know, us switching to new uniforms uh, or a combination of all those things that, that took place uh, to come up with the, the specific name, Gray Ghost.
Jim?
I hear Jeff again. Go ahead.
Uh, I was gonna say, I, I, that's, I kinda came to the conclusion myself in its speculation as anyone else's, it was probably a combination of all three, uh, all three things. The name Gray Ghost fit the uniforms perfectly, the coats seeing the uh, team on the field. Uh, but it was the new gray uniforms, I think that probably was the biggest uh, drawing point to have something gray and Gray Ghost seemed to fit that. So I, it, it, I don't think it was any one thing, I was, I think it was a combination of factors.
Uh, so I thank Jeff and Jim both very much for the history. I'm always intrigued by the old history and what you can find in those archives. You, you find some real gems which are, are fun to find. Um, but right now we're faced with a student population and a community that is concerned about the, the, the mascot and the name. And so I think what I'd like to try to do is figure out a path forward and involving students and a more diverse group of people to weigh in on this and how best to solve the, the concerns. And Chris, I saw your hand up.
I just, and it's an, it's an apology and a question, because I was scanning the memo again. And then Jim, you said something about the trustees and, and I'm afraid I just missed it. Can you repeat what you were saying about the trustees?
Um, well, Jeff's the president of the trustees. Um, you know, it, it's the sixth oldest high school in the country and the trustees helped to build the original Westford Academy, Chris, uh, at no cost to the community. And the archives that I found this week, which is an original contract, was back from nineteen, uh, eighteen ninety-four. Um, so you can see that, I'm not a, a, an attorney by any means, but it certainly looks like there's some really great um, history here as to how this was developed and, and came to be uh, as this school. But nothing in the, nothing in the archives that I was able to search late last week um, gave any history other than what Jeff and I had found out about the mascot at this time, Chris.
Okay, so it wasn't related to the mascot?
No, no, only, only the fact that, you know, the school was, you know, built to, before both men and women um, and so forth, and was the first high school, uh, and it was supported by the trustees financially.
Thanks.
Were there other people with questions? Um, I mean, oh, go ahead Gloria.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I'm gonna echo a bit of what you said Avery, that, I mean, I always find history fascinating. And I appreciate um, the time um, Jeff and, and, and Jim have put into, to looking into this history. I know a lot of students have also delved into the history. I know we, we've had some students who recently have done some of their own research, which is fantastic. I think there was a student who did a capstone project in recent years that was um, specifically the, addressing the mascot and whether the mascot name should be changed. So I think this is a, this is a topic that's come up kind of um, repeatedly over the last couple of years. And I, I agree with Avery, I think it's time to just explore it further. And, and ultimately, it may depend less on what the original intent was. And it sounds like through all the research, maybe the original in- intent is ambiguous, we may never know exactly, or as um, Mr. Hall indicated, it may be a combination of all those factors that made the um, name appealing at the time. But I think the question is, what is, what is the, the impact on our students now? And what do our students now feel? And do they feel that the current mascot represents them and is a mascot that they can take pride in and wear on their uniforms and cheer for? Or is it time for that mascot to evolve? So I think it's really important to hear the student voices and the students that have um, brought forth their concerns about it and what their ideas are for how our mascot um, may need to evolve in the future. So I, I, I don't know exactly what the mechanism for that's gonna be yet. Um, and I know we have all these other to- topics for tonight. But um, I think those students who have taken a lot of initiative to do their own research and have opinions about it um, should reach out to us and to Jim and, you know, let us know what they think the next steps should be. What are their ideas?
Gloria?
Oh, hi, go ahead Jeff.
I was just gonna say, if, if they have questions, I mean, I'm, I work with the Historical Society now, of, of very, very close ties to the school, um, to the alumni, to the trustees. Um, include me as part of that conversation if you would. Uh, if they're looking to bounce ideas off of me or just have questions, I'd be more than happy to participate.
Alicia, I saw your hand.
So I know as a response to the um, W P S eight can't wait and the various um, student-run and suggested movements and uh, diversity and inclusion suggestions that have come up, that we've started talking about having a student forum. Um, I would like to suggest that we include this as part of the student forum. And I think that will give us a, a better idea of what the current students concerns and thoughts and ideas are. Um, and I know that we're trying to plan that for sometime very soon, so you know, not to backburner it. Um, it will, you know, if we can include it as part of that, I think um, that would be in a great way to sort of survey the students.
Um, and, and just to clarify, go ahead Jim.
Well, I am very open uh, to, to continue with this conversation and to get folks, I know there's a petition out there and so forth, to work with those students uh, to get a group together using our two ambassadors here, both Brian and Hannah, uh, to do some additional conversations with you. I appreciate having the conversation tonight and, and uh, you know, you always, uh, there's been so many um, uh, conversations being had about uh, mascots and so forth. I mean, even today, the Washington Redskins have decided to go ahead and change their uh, their, their name and so forth. So um, this is a good conversation, it's a rich conversation, and, and I'm willing to host those conversations and, and get students involved and see where we end up. Um, you know, right now, I, I did ask Jeff Bunyan to put together a, a financial impact and I'm willing to, I have that with, with me this evening. I can share some of what the financial impact would be based on a, a um, change. Um, but there could also be a mild change uh, that we could discuss. And again, you know, something instead of Gray Ghost going to Ghosts and so forth. And I've discussed that with Superintendent Olson, it's just maybe an idea, uh, keeping the school colors and, and or maybe we go in a different direction, because as Jeff pointed out, the article also said, uh, they cited the Lancers and the Eagles and so forth. So um, I'm open for discussion and, and pulling together a, a group of folks, you know, utilizing Jeff's history and Brian and Hannah and getting some folks from the petition to get together and see, you know, if we can, uh, continue uh, to do some of this historical research and see if we can dig up any additional artifacts, because there is a lot of information uh, in that fireproof safe that the safe, that the trustees purchased for us, uh, again, which is rich in history. So I'm willing to do that.
So financially, I just, um, I thank you and uh, Jeff for, we did get a copy of the financial impact. So I, I understand that it would, it would require a lot. I mean, uniforms alone, it's a huge, a huge undertaking. And then we also would have the floors, the scoreboard. Um, we, I mean, it really goes on and on. But I don't want, one, the history to overtake what we're hearing and seeing right now from our students. I, I appreciate the history, but I also wanna appreciate the diversity that Westford has become and, and listen to those voices as loudly as the history.
Absolutely, Avery. And again, you know, as principal of the building, I want every student to feel welcome and supported and, and respected in our school community. We have a lot of kids, we have a diverse community. And if one student feels that uh, you know, upset about something like that or not welcome, then that, that concerns me.
Sean, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I, I think something that's at least comforting to me and I appreciate uh, Principal Antonelli and Mr. Hall being here, that the concern about the monuments that are being torn down throughout the United States, right? It's not just the figures who were on the monuments, it's why they were erected, right? I mean, they were erected in a lot of ways to stick their nose at um, the union in a way, and they were also done at strategic certain times, like after World War Two and stuff. It's, what's comforting to me from hearing from Jim and from Mr. Hall is that this mascot, although it may be partially named after a Confederate soldier, is not necessarily deep-seated in that hate, right? Or that deep-seated racism, but what? Uh, so that's comforting to me. But at the same token, I, I, I do agree with Avery, I think that this has to be a student-led thing, because at the reality of it, it, at the end of the day, they're the ones who have to wear these shirts and be comfortable with it comfortable in their own school. So um, I, I'm, I'm comforted by the presentation and I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing more from the students. And I, I'd be interested if at minimum, I think we have to do a student uh, survey, right? Um, and really have, have like a focus group almost where we can hear uh, as to how this, this mascot affects them in their day-to-day.
My understanding is it has come up before. I think Gloria mentioned a, a capstone project. I'd be curious, that was just in the last handful of years, two thousand and fourteen maybe?
Um, I think the, the capstone was more recent. I think the capstone might have been a student in twenty nineteen. Um, but I do see a comment in a chat from an alum from class of two thousand and fourteen um, and said that, you know, in two thousand and fourteen, this was discussed, this, this came up and there were questions surrounding the mascot. So really, I think questions surrounding the mascot have really gone back for a num- a number of years.
And yeah, so I think it is, yeah, we just need to take this and, and look forward with it with the, the uh, the students. Um, we know that they are a very smart and powerful groups. We know that they are a very smart and powerful group. So I'd like to, to harness that energy to this. Any other comments? Yes, Chris?
I was just gonna mention, because the student forum was brought up, we are talking about trying to get something together, and we can talk more about this in the upcoming agenda item for diversity and inclusion possibly too. But we want to have a school committee hosted student forum, a listening session of sorts around the issues of race in Westford Public Schools with the focus of how can we do better? And that's something that we've tentatively, we're hoping to try to do on July twenty-ninth that evening, that's a Wednesday. So kind of do a save the date for Wednesday, July twenty-ninth. Details are still very sketchy and early, so we're trying to hammer down a lot of things. Talk to a number of people who might want to be interested in helping guide what that looks like, what kind of forum that will take and who's gonna be involved. But hopefully we'll have something where it gives voice to our students and our recent alums around race.
That sounds great. Thank you, Chris. Other questions? I, I want to thank Mr. Hall and Mr. Antonelli for joining us and sharing that. Hopefully, we will, we'll, we'll get this on the list of things we want to tackle with our students. Do our students have anything? Have they, Brian or Hannah, do you have anything you want to add?
I just wanted to add that, I don't, I don't even know what to say. A lot of the comments are kind of crazy. But growing up, like, there was never a real tie to our Grey Ghost mascot being tied to that show. It was commonly known, I think, for almost anyone in Westford that it was the Grey Ghost that haunted like the third floor of the Road and Bush School. Those are the stories I've heard. And even talking about it recently, in recent weeks, I think almost everyone I've had a conversation with about this has been like, what, like that, that was a thing? So if we're just like such a loosely held connection to like a Confederate soldier in a show, I don't think it's something like we should spend too much money on to change, in my honest opinion. But at the same time, I'll be, I'm open and like happy to start and like look into it and see how people felt before this became a topic and see how people of color in Westford Academy like view the Grey Ghost before, like years prior. I think it would be a good idea to like get polls out and surveys and see if like this was something that made people feel like not welcomed in WA beforehand, but just growing up, I, I don't think many people in Westford had really heard of it in that sense or ever saw it in that sense.
Thank you, Brian. All right, other questions? All right, so we will include this in the student forum. And I think, Bill, I think the diversity and inclusion team should also kind of have it on its list because I'd like to hear from that, that diverse group and maybe they, their access to young alums or anybody else would be helpful in sort of hearing, I want to hear all sides.
We'll definitely do that.
Thank you. All right.
I know, I know there were a number of comments that we didn't get a chance to get to in the Q and A. And I just want those students to know, we are reading those comments, we are hearing those comments. And I think this is a conversation that needs to continue and it definitely, you know, needs to include students who are concerned about the mascot. I appreciate Brian, you sharing your perspective, that you're comfortable with it and you hadn't had a question about it. Clearly, we've got other students who, who are uncomfortable with it. So I think we, like Avery said, we do need to hear all sides. And, and I just don't want those students to think that just because we're moving on in our agenda this evening, this issue is closed. This is, this will remain an open issue and an open discussion.
Oh, absolutely. And Jim, I saw your hand up. Go ahead.
Avery, am I able to see those questions from the audience and so forth, just so I'm familiar with?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Can we, can we capture the Q and A?
I think we probably can. And Jim, you can see that, I think if you have a button at the bottom of your screen that says Q and A, you can see them in real time right now.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you for that.
And we will try, I've been writing down a couple of the students' names that are, are involved. And so I think, but I'm pretty sure we can capture that in this recording.
I can kind of copy them too for you Avery, I just figured it out.
Okay, that would be great.
Send them to Jim.
That'd be great, Sean. Thank you.
Yeah.
So yes, we will get those Jim, one way or another. All right. Well, I thank everyone. This is not a, a, you know, we will continue this conversation along in, in many, I think, formats with students and with the community.
Avery, will I be signing off now?
Yes, Jeff, you can sign off. You're welcome to stay if you'd like and participate in, in the rest of the meeting.
I've been to a few meetings over the years and so.
I, I understand. Yes.
Though I wanted to congratulate Gloria on your reelection and Valerie on your election and good luck to all of yous. I mean, the, the challenges to face this community and the school community this year are just unbelievable. And I'm sure that, you know, with the talent we have here, that we'll be able to move forward positively. Good luck.
Thank, thank you Jeff, very kind.
Thank you.
And Jim, you too can stay on or sign off. It is your, it's your evening to claim or, or not. We can't hear.
I'm sorry Avery, thank you. I will be watching and if I need to come back in, I'm happy to do that.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Let's jump over to the WEA Resolution in Support of Education Funding in the COVID nineteen era. Everyone should have seen this. I believe it was distributed and I, I think it's in the packet. I believe. So we wanted to review it and if we feel comfortable, take a vote on it. It is in a lot of ways very similar to the resolution that we passed that we, we voted on two weeks ago, or actually more than that now, four weeks ago. So I wanted to hear sort of people's thoughts on whether we feel we need this additional. It is a request that is coming from our Unit A WEA group. So are there questions, concerns, comments? Ming Chen?
Yeah, so that's my question. I think you explained it that we already had a resolution in June. So I know, understand that this is a WEA resolution, but I, I, I just don't know that what our role is here. That's one thing. The other thing really is that if we are going to actually support a resolution, I have some concern about some of the languages because I don't really know what the funding for next year is going to look like based on the economy. And then he says our town and the city should maintain their commitment to fully fund our public schools. And obviously, narrow commitment to, to do that, but I don't know if like the economy will be able to actually to, to a hundred percent fund all the schools if, for example, we're losing a lot of revenue. So I, I guess, I just, I just feel that what we did in June, already did our purpose. And then this is a WEA one, I don't, I, I just don't feel, don't feel like we need to actually double doing the work.
I think this one speaks, and, and Mike is saying, it's not just about the unfunded mandates, which is a lot of what we want, we, we pushed for in the resolution that we took up from MASC. This talks a little more globally about some of the other funding and really pushing down the, you know, the, the other activities, the Student Opportunity Act. Go ahead Alicia.
So, sorry about that, I was muted. So I agree with what you're saying Ming Chen, but I think we have already taken a stand as far as the funding and wanting to maintain our commitment to education and the teachers are doing this. And I think it says something for all of us together to be supporting each other. So personally, though, we already voted on our own resolution that came, came from NASC. I think there's something to be said for supporting the teachers and their resolution too. Because in the end, it's going to take all of us to make any of this work. And presenting a united front and presenting a, a supportive environment where all of the parties are working together, I think is extremely important right now.
Sean, did you, yep?
Ditto Alicia. The, the whole purpose of this, even though there's a tremendous amount of overlap from what we already passed, is to symbolically support our, our, our union who's going to be facing one of the most unprecedented years, well, certainly the most unprecedented school years in our lifetime, I think. So I, I think at minimum that we have to, this, this thing is the bare minimum. I don't think there's anything controversial in this. I, I think that we absolutely need to pass this.
I see. Go ahead Bill, you?
Well, I, I absolutely agree Alicia with what, what you said. I think this is, whatever leverage we can exert towards the state and the federal government is to our advantage. Every single call by the commissioner to superintendents across the state is met with questions about, are we going to have sufficient funding, not only temporarily, but moving forward also. And, and the commissioner is very concerned also. So I, I don't see any downside to this, only an upside in terms of making our voices heard that we need to be fully funded and have an increase in state aid and also an increase in the federal aid to states and cities and towns to maintain a responsible school system that meets the needs of all students. So I, I absolutely agree. I don't see any downside to this at all.
Gloria, you also had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I do, I do want to emphasize that I think this resolution goes beyond the earlier one. The earlier one that we, we adopted was an MASC resolution about not having unfunded mandates from the state regarding the current public health crisis. But really, I think this one does go much broader and deeper. This comes out of a multi-year effort to push for education funding reform in the state of Massachusetts through the Fund our Future Act, Action, lobbying actions and others. Large numbers of teachers and school committee members and community members really fought hard for that legislation that was originally the Promise Act, ultimately named the Student Opportunity Act and referred to here. We received, that legislation finally passed and we received estimates about what our initial one-year phased in over seven-year funding, but what our initial first-year funding would be for the Student Opportunity Act. We relied on that estimate when we designed our FY twenty-one budget. So if the state legislature now, not only in the face of a pandemic where we are facing increased costs, pulls back on their commitment to that Student Opportunity Act, then we are losing twice over. We are facing additional costs with the pandemic and we are losing that Student Opportunity Act funding, which was assured to us by the passage of that legislation and by their initial estimates, which we relied on in making our FY twenty-one budget. So I think this resolution goes much broader and it, it is much more than, than just supporting our local teachers' union. It is, it is making a statement to the state legislature that they need to stand behind Westford Public Schools and all the public schools across Massachusetts.
Other thoughts, questions on this? If we're comfortable, we can take a vote to support this resolution. It sounds like many of us are interested in supporting the WEA and their efforts to make sure that funding stays where it needs to be for all of this that we will be facing in the coming year, years, actually, I think. If people are comfortable, I would ask for a motion then to support the resolution.
I will move to support the resolution for WEA.
I, I would second that, that motion and add that, and of course, we should share whatever the result of this vote is with Jim Arciero, Ed Kennedy, Lori Trahan, all, all of our local officials, as well as the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion that needs?
Yeah, yeah, I totally get it. But my concern is that if we are actually proposing something and then the promise cannot be kept. I, I just, I'm concerned about like we're making some promises and then now we're not going to be able to keep it. For example, we can't ask the governor to fund everything, we can't, we can't demand all the things. And then, but he cannot actually print money out of trees, right? So, so a nice narrow mechanism to make it happen, I, I, it's not like, I, I'm, my concern is about like if we make a promise, how, how are we going to keep it?
Not a promise, it's a, it's a vote to support. Right, it's not a promise.
I would say it doesn't encumber us to do, to provide the money ourselves. I would say says is to the state, we are unified, we are school committees, we are administrators, we are teachers, we are all together and telling you we need these resources to educate our children. And if we can support them as they support us, it provides the united front. I don't think it encombers us to do, to, to provide a specific amount of money.
Yeah, I have no problem in like beating up the drums because it doesn't cost me anything, right? But, but, but I, I, I'm more interested in more than the lip service.
I, I think it, I mean, Ming Chen, since I've spoken in favor of this, I'll clarify that from my perspective, I believe this is advocacy and it is not, is not a promise or an assurance because we can only do what we can with the funds we have. And it does not at all mean that, that we are also not still partners with our, our town cohorts in terms of making responsible decisions about the funding that Westford has available. I mean, we're still one town, we have one set of problems to solve and we have to do that together. So of course, we still have to do that as partners with them. So I, I don't think this is contradicting that in any way or that we are making some kind of promise that we can know that we later can't keep. I think this is advocacy on behalf of the public school system.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you. That makes me feel better.
Okay, so now that we have a motion and a second, and if there's no more discussion, we will do a roll call vote. Because I love those. So I will start with Chris.
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Gloria?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And I, aye. So it's a unanimous vote to support the resolution. So I thank you all for that. Bill, I'm gonna turn it over to you for the reopening update. And there are some questions that I will be asking that had come in already and were, were, were more appropriate in the reopening discussion. You're muted.
We are very actively meeting in our subcommittees. You and Gloria are gonna be participating in some this week, including a meeting of our operations subcommittee tomorrow. We have, I had a great conversation with Carrie earlier and I'll allow her to talk about the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee. I'm facilitating the operations subcommittee. We, we are putting together a spreadsheet which we think the public will find helpful, the parents will find helpful. A number of topics of operational and logistical topics in terms of what will the, will school transportation look like once we receive the guidance from the state on that? What will the process look like when children arrive at school at all grade levels? They're transitioning to their class, what will the classroom environment look like? And that is based on certainly the distancing factor that is really one of the key pivot points in, in the discussion that we will, we will have moving forward is the three feet versus the six feet distancing. What does lunch look like? What does recess look like? What does dismissal look like? What do bathroom breaks look like? The mask breaks that children, as you know, the commissioner and the Department of Public Health has said, children are supposed to sanitize their hands before removing the mask and then once putting it on again. So all of the issues, we are outlining the resources that we think are necessary based on a particular model and the cost of those resources, so that we can detail that to you. I know I have an update, I have a document here from the Social Emotional Adjustment Committee. Also, they are working on professional development ideas for our staff and how we make our students and our staff feel comfortable returning. What are the issues that we need to discuss? How do we make students feel welcome back into the school and, and also staff? Because the staff really have been deeply impacted by this also. really have been deeply impacted by this also. Our other committee, the Hygiene Protocol, is interacting with our health department more than some of us might, might be, although we have questions periodically for Jeff Stevens also. They will be issuing guidance on what happens if a student presents symptoms in a, in a class. What is, what is the requirement there or, or a staff member for that fact? What are the personal protection equipment devices that we will be equipping our staff with? And we have already ordered many of those, which include masks and gloves, goggles, protective, almost like jumpsuits for staff, particularly working with our students with, with disabilities, hand sanitizing gel, the hand sanitizing stations that dispense the foam, an entire number of personal protection equipment items that we have already ordered and are expecting in the first or second week of, of July. And that's one of the things I'm going to be discussing with the teacher in the teacher forum also this week is what, what protection, personal protection items we have committed to purchasing. We're also looking at, for example, if we were to go to a six-foot distancing model, which would require us to engage in a hybrid model of teaching and learning. And I think I received survey I did of the principals for both the three feet and six feet distancing later this afternoon with, with a couple of pictures. That will require us to purchase perhaps some either rectangular tables, age-appropriate size, or some trapezoidal tables because one or two of our elementary schools have round tables at the early childhood levels and those are not appropriate for the mandate that students are facing in the same direction. Okay, so a lot of things, very, very many things we're considering. I'll be honest with you, we're all up late at night and sometimes we're sending emails to each other at three and four o'clock in the morning or texts in terms of something we just thought of that we didn't want to forget about that we might want to address. So we'll be discussing these in the operations subcommittee tomorrow. We look forward to your input and Gloria's input, Avery. And then your inputs certainly on the social emotional committee and the following teaching and learning subcommittee meeting also, but it's an active group. We will have the plan available to distribute to you on the twenty-fourth. You know, some, some school systems have, have already, a few have already presented their plans. A majority have not, a majority have not even begun to even talk with the union about, or hear from their union about impact bargaining. And we'll, we'll talk about that later in, in executive session. But I, I honestly think we're in, in pretty good shape. Wednesday night, we'll be telling in terms of types of comments, suggestions and, and for that fact, the questions also that are asked of us. So we're looking forward to as much input as possible. I'll, I'll stop there to answer some of the questions that people have.
Yep, there's, there's several questions. So one, which I think is a really good question to get answered is families who do not feel comfortable sending their children. Will there be or will there not be a remote option for those students?
Yes, we are required, if we go to a full return in-person model, we are still required to remotely educate those children whose parents feel that they, it is not safe for them to return to school either because they're immunocompromised or someone in their immediate or extended families.
Do they need to provide medical proof of that or is that yet to be determined?
We, we're seeking clarification from the commissioner and the D P H on that.
Okay. So there's a couple of questions about the, the actual committee itself and the, the working groups. How were these people chosen and is there a list? And I, I know I can answer the second. There is a list of things on those on the website, on the front page, under the reopening information. Were those solicited and placed or was that an open call for volunteers to help in this process?
Well, I sent out an email to the staff before the end of the school year, seeking volunteers to serve on the committees. We have a good cross-representation of elementary, middle and high school staff on all committees. And so I, I think we have a very good and a very sound group that is representative of, of all of our students and, and, and their colleagues also.
Alicia?
So two concerns, questions. The first being that I know that there's a list of staff who are assigned to these committees on the webpage, but could we please update that to list what their positions are? Because I know even for myself, I had to go through and look up a couple of people because I couldn't remember. Is that a math teacher? Is that, are they from the English department? So if we can please update better understand what they're bringing to, to the discussion. And secondly, you will be, you will be hearing from the C P A C. The C P A C was, I've been in communication with the C P A C parents for several weeks now with all of their concerns. And today I was asked to bring forward that the C P A C would like to request that they have representation in some of these meetings. They will be contacting the administration. They will send you a formal request. But their concern is that as a C P A C, under chapter seventy-one and under C M R six oh three, we are supposed to be providing guidance. We are supposed to be providing input. And when we're talking about things like distancing and masks and protocols, there is another level, another layer that those parents have concerns about, especially, you know, you talked about, we have to provide remote. What happens halfway through the year? What happens? You know, there's a lot more questions that these parents have. So they will be contacting you shortly, but the C P A C is formally requesting that they have representation on these subcommittees.
Absolutely welcome. And I would, not only representation on the committees, but if they would like to meet with, with Carrie and Courtney and I, I would be very glad to meet with the parents. In fact, I was just in, in contact with one of the subcommittees today in that I, I didn't feel at this point in time, we had enough attention and enough detailed information on how we are going to serve children with disabilities and English language learners. And, and that is an absolute priority that we want to weave into every one of our, our subcommittees. So be glad to do that. If they will contact me, Alicia, we'll get them started on a subcommittee right away and I, along with Carrie and Courtney, would be very glad to meet with as, as many of the parents that would like to meet with us.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and we'll meet soon. Let's, let's meet soon. The clock is ticking.
The clock, the clock is ticking. So you mentioned at the beginning, the new survey that's out, looks like we are getting a good response on that. And you mentioned that sixty-three to seventy percent of parents are comfortable sending their students back. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
And that's returning to full school as you've outlined with three or six feet and masks and all the other safeties?
Yes.
Okay. And have we looked at any breakdown by grade? So, you know, are we looking at diff treating the K to two or the three to five different than the nine to twelve?
Well, that, the survey was stratified based on K to two grouping of pre-K to two, three to five, six to eight, nine to twelve. And so we have results, in fact, I have a pile of the results right here to the right of me from all of the different grade spans.
Okay. And so can we talk for a second about staff, the teachers? What if we don't have enough staff willing to come back for the number of students who are willing to come back?
Well, that's where we need to get a sense on Thursday from the staff. I've asked the principals to, to survey the staff in their respective buildings to understand who might be uncomfortable in terms of returning for the same reasons. They may have health conditions or their child or children might, or their spouse or extended family. We've also provided our administrators with some guidance on the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, evaluating leave requests because there are certain criteria that need to be met for the approval of a staff member to be provided a leave under the legislation. So we want everybody to be familiar with, it just can't be, well, I don't feel comfortable coming back. There has to be some documentation. And so that is one of the major issues that we are facing in every other school system is how many of our staff will feel comfortable or not comfortable returning? That is a crucial, crucial issue because what we have intended to do in our preliminary conversations is we know that we will, we are obligated to teach some children remotely. We will be using in all likelihood, as long as the licensure is appropriate, we will be using those staff who don't feel comfortable returning once again, age and grade level appropriate, to do the remote learning for the most part. At least that's through the preliminary conversation. That may, like everything else, the commissioner has always told us over the last five weeks, that may be subject to change. But that's the preliminary thinking.
Chris, go ahead.
I just, I would find it highly improbable that we would have alignment with the staff who aren't comfortably in the school and the students who need to be taught in all the different subject areas. So I, I mean, I will be happy to be proven wrong, but that sounds like a very unrealistic pipe dream, in my opinion. And, and furthermore, I just don't, we can't rely on that. That can't be our, our approach, right? I mean, like we have to be able to accommodate the, you know, the full cadre of you know, teachers who are not able to teach in person and the full cadre of students who are not. So I'm just, I, I'm just saying I wouldn't rely on that.
No, we're not, Chris. Believe me. Because we don't know what that alignment might be. What the commissioner has said is if needed, we could use specialists that are appropriately licensed also to, to fill in for, for teachers who are out. But no, we, we don't have any, any thoughts that it's guaranteed that any staff member that is out and will be capable of remotely teaching will be aligned with students in that particular grade level or grade span. So that's, you know, that's just one of the preliminary thoughts that we, we have had. It's one of the thoughts that the commissioner has come up with also, but wouldn't disagree with you at all, that there has to be alignment with the grade level and licensure.
So Bill, we're seeing a lot of questions and personally I have concern the three and the six foot. I know that the World Health Organization is supporting one and the CDC is supporting one and D E S I is supporting one. And I, I assume that you as administrators will take medical professionals' advice and, and make the best determination as to whether three or six feet is appropriate. It seems like the entire, everything we hear is six feet. And so all of a sudden the three feet came in. And so who and, you know, who is going to be making that decision?
Well, realistically, I, I will be making a recommendation to you because it is the school committee's ultimate decision in every community with respect to the responsibility of educating children. That's the big question that everyone is facing right now. We do have the medical documentation, which I have included in the, you know, in the introduction to the, that I've written in the reopening plan that says the medical professions, professionals in the American Academy, Academy of Pediatrics, Journal of Pediatrics has, is now considering three foot, three feet safe. In the commissioner's guidance, he has repeatedly said we should aspire to six feet, but no less than three feet. I think a lot of people do feel more comfortable with the six feet, certainly. But we're going to present you, and I'm going to present a recommendation to you based on as much medical information and up-to-date medical information as I possibly can. I'll be conferring with our own health department also and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. I've included in their statistics or data in terms of the long-term trend of COVID nineteen cases in the, in Massachusetts in particular. We have a particularly low incidence in Westford. I just, incidentally, just before we started our meeting, you know, my daughter is a nurse in an emergency room. She said, this is the first time in the last four months that they have not had a COVID nineteen patient and which is encouraging. But that being said, you know, there's that perception by, by parents and by staff that six is better than three. And so I'll present you with all the information, my best recommendation. And then it, actually, it will be up to the school committee to decide. Unless, I will say this, unless the gov- governor comes out with a, an executive order on distancing, which I, I don't anticipate will occur, but you know, in talking with the commissioner directly, really the only one who could bring a rock-solid recommendation and mandate is, is the governor.
Gloria and then Alicia.
I am not an epidemiologist. I'm not. And I understand that superintendents and school administrators and teachers and parents and school committees are now being asked to make very difficult decisions. But I have to, I have to immediately say that I am not comfortable as a school committee member saying that I am qualified to make the decision about whether our kids are safe in three feet versus six feet. And I'm not comfortable as a school committee member to be able to say that our staff is safe in a building with X, X number of feet between the desks of the children arranged. I, I understand that we're being put in this position and that we have to ultimately make decisions about reopening. But hearing you say, Bill, that, that it's going to ultimately be up to the school committee to decide whether it's three or six, I've just, I've got to throw up my hands and say, I am not an epidemiologist. If I have, if I'm told to do that, I will give my vote to our nursing staff and I will ask our nursing staff because I don't see how I could, as a school committee member, could possibly be asked to make that choice. I can ask questions. I can, I can try and analyze the reopening plans, but to decide three versus six, I have no basis on, on which to make that decision. None.
Yeah, I, I absolutely understand what you're saying. I, and neither do I, nor does any other superintendent across the state, but we'll, we'll go on the best available information. I will be conferring with our school nurses because they're extraordinarily well-qualified. And two of them are on the reopening committee and have been contributing greatly to our insight. But this is, this is the most difficult issue that any of us have, have ever faced in terms of what's the right answer? And you know, I'm going to present it to you, my recommendation based on the best available information. What we'll be telling is, once again, our surveys and the forum with the parents and the forum with our staff so that I get some sense of do people actually feel uncomfortable even returning to school in, in full? And so and I mean it seriously, when I talk about some sleepless nights, I mean, I'm up sometimes two or three times a night saying, what's the right thing to do? And are there other, other sources of information to, to base a decision on? And so I will present you as much information nationally, regionally, locally, and you know, certainly from Westford, upon which my decision is, is based and my recommendation to you is based.
Bill, are there other medical professionals on any of the committees other than our two nurses? Do we have any pediatricians on there? Or first responders?
We, we don't. You know, the, the commissioner certainly has, he has a, an epidemiologist from Mass General and another, another physician in the field of epidemiology. And that's where he's getting all his information. So I don't have any problems contacting local specialists. And I'll, I'll certainly ask our nursing staff. Nurses have been just absolutely fabulous and they're conferring with us.
Um, Chris, I see you have a question that I have. I'm trying to get through a lot of these questions online. There's so many coming in. Some of them, I, I want people to understand, we may have to wait and answer some of them on Wednesday because it's, it's really diving into some of the more specifics. A top-level question, Bill, have all the staff been surveyed on whether they're willing to come back or not? Or is that the hope for Thursday?
Well, that's one of the hopes for, certainly for, for Thursday. Mike Colson, as you might have seen, just released a staff survey that the W A E A engaged in that. Those results just came out this afternoon and were sent to all of us. Those results just came out this afternoon and were sent to all of us. And so I haven't had a chance to look at those yet. There's about sixty or seventy pages in there. So over the next couple of days, I'll be doing that. And with, with the questions that go unanswered tonight or unanswered Wednesday night, what we're going to try to do in between trying to write this report and finish off the report is through a frequently asked questions document that hopefully will, will be helpful for the community.
All right. So let's, let's take, I know Alicia just had her hand up, then Chris, then Valerie. I'm, I'm seeing them all and I'm reading questions. Go ahead, Alicia.
Thanks. So clearly this is one of the most complicated things any of us will ever do in our lives. No one could have predicted any of this. I'm extremely pleased to hear about consulting with the Board of Health and consulting with our nurses. And I thought I had seen on one of the lists that Sue Hanley was on one of the reopening committees. But when I went back, I couldn't find her. I think that's a unique resource. Personally, I was going to reach out to her myself because she is a unique individual in that she sits on our Board of Health and she's a school nurse. And she has a fantastic background in mental health and wellbeing. So it, I guess what I'm asking is, I don't want to volunteer her, but reaching out to the Board of Health and getting their input and reaching out to our nurses and then, you know, sort of coalescing those two things together. And I know we have a district doctor as well because every district has like the, the supervising, consulting, sorry, not supervising, consulting. And I believe that's someone from Pediatrics West. So if we could also consult them as well, because I know that, you know, the, the district, the, the DESI is going to send us guidelines, but I think no matter what DESI sends us, people are going to be more comfortable if they hear it from a more local source. They're going to feel more, I, I, I don't want to say comforted, but they, I think it would be easier if it came from our nurses, our supervising pediatrician, our Board of Health, when these decisions finally come down as to what the rationale for them was.
And I will, we have Joe Mitchell and Cheryl Carpenter on a couple of our committees. But they know that I'll be meeting remotely with all of the nurses that, who represent all of the ages of, of our students. And so that will take place sometime in the next probably four workdays. And certainly hoping to do that this week. One or two of them are on vacation, but most, most of them are around. And I'm in constant contact with, with Jeff Stevens and Gail Johnson. They've been wonderful resources from the, from the health department. Very, very helpful.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Right, Chris, I think you're up next.
Okay, thanks. I'm trying to think who I'm going to volunteer, you know, who, who's out in the community to volunteer to be on the committee. But I can't think of anybody right now. But I, I will point, I will volunteer that we are not meeting in person right now. And I would guess that none of the reopening committees are meeting in person. They're not sitting in conference room B, six feet apart right now.
Not to this point, but we've talked about, because we're, we're meeting frequently about in-person meetings also.
All right. I mean, I would say when, when those reopening committees are meeting three feet apart, then we, you know, then we can talk about three feet for our students. I think it's just, it, it, it just, it's very clear that we are not comfortable meeting yet. So we have to be really careful about what we're signing our, our, our students and our staff up for in, in six, seven, eight weeks from now. Along with that, I would also ask that we look at options, you know, I know we're going to have remote option, hybrid option, fully in person, but I think looking at things like a phased in, like, you know, we start at remote and we, you know, we see how things go. A phased approach, which doesn't seem to, it's sort of a hybrid of the hybrid and the, actually a hybrid of all three. I'd recommend that's on the table. And I also think we should look at each grade level in each school and even subject matter classes at middle and high school differently. I think there are some classes that would lend themselves really well to remote learning or better to remote learning than others. And other classes that in-person is more important. So thinking about how we can do things in a nuanced way where you're mostly remote, but this class is going to get together in person, you know, a little bit. I mean, that's part of the hybrid, but just not just doing it in a cross-the-board plan, but being strategic about the types of classes, the types of students, the types of teachers, the types of spaces, things like that. I just want to make sure not kind of a blanket, all schools have the same, the same plan.
No, we, Kerry and I were talking about that today, Chris. We were actually talking about one or two very interesting ideas that are a little bit more specific to various grade levels. And so, you know, we're going to flush those out in, in the committees. And I was quite interested in, in the conversation we had in terms of the, the innovative, kind of the innovative nature of. So now that, you know, Kerry addressed that more.
Do we know if P and H are still being required for next school year?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Ming Chen.
Do we, do we know if P and H are still required for the next school year?
As of right now, yes. Unless, unless the commissioner comes up with, you know, with something different. You know, what, what, what we're looking at also is, under many of the conditions, there is no way that a school system can meet time and learning requirements. Which is, you know, the nine hundred hours at the elementary level and nine hundred and ninety hours in grade six through twelve because of all of the time and transitioning, mask time, the extended time for lunches. And the commissioner is, has hinted also that he may modify the hundred, the one hundred and eighty day instructional year requirement by three to five days. As you know, we've already done that and addressed three days upfront. He's talking about three to five days. Now, we haven't heard anything more from him, but for professional development at the, at the end of the year, at the beginning of the year, excuse me.
Valerie, you had a question and then I want to talk a little bit about staff and some other questions that have come in.
Thanks. I think we've kind of danced around. I, I didn't hear Bill, you talked about, Bill, you talked about Ops and the other subcommittees, but I didn't want to lose an update from Kerry on teaching and learning subcommittee. But, but I also have two other points. Obviously, there's a lot of specific questions. Like, I'm trying to look at the Q and A, but then I get distracted. And so as, as part of Wednesday's plan, are, are there representatives from each subcommittee planned to be either, maybe not video participants, but be able to answer the questions because clearly we might not have answers, but we are adding to the questions, so.
Yes, there will be panelists from every one of the subcommittees.
Okay, great. And one last thing, I just wanted some clarification on the timeline. I know, you know, with all of the anxiety families really, I, I feel like are waiting for a date for when they can either hear a final decision or at least hear more of some of these details that everybody's, you know, asking about. And so I know you had mentioned that on seven twenty-four, you'll be sharing a plan. Is that public or just to the committee?
With, I'll be sharing that with the school committee because I'd like, courtesy to you, to have you review it first.
And then we have a meeting scheduled for seven twenty-seven, so that we will be reviewing that in public at that meeting. And will that plan have, like, your, is, is that a recommendation or is that three, is that details of all three plans that the commissioner has asked for?
It will be the details of all three plans.
Okay, because I did notice that on the guidance that came out on Friday from Commissioner Riley P. Asked for no public final decision until the department had a, had a chance to review from all the districts. So I was just kind of curious how that would work as if, I, I wasn't sure if you were presenting a recommendation and then how that would be for a public final decision.
Well, it will be my recommendation to you, but it will be the specific approach that we're going to take, whether it's full return of in-person, hybrid or, or remote learning. You know, it, it, I have to give you a report that has specifics in it. And I, I don't anticipate, for example, if a community adopts a hybrid approach, which would be required in, in our community if we went with the six-foot distancing for capacity reasons. We need to be able to, the commissioner will look at the plan that we are, are presenting to you. And I don't anticipate that the commissioner will be disapproving the plan. He has mentioned to us on several occasions that as long as we have a solid plan in place that represents students well academically and meets, very importantly, the health and safety requirements that they have stipulated, he'll certainly consider it.
Thanks.
Okay, so there's, again, there's, I think we're up to twenty-six questions still, still in the queue. So let's talk a little bit about staff. What are we doing to protect our staff? I know we have some days at the beginning of the school year right now carved out to help staff get ready if we are back in school. But what else are we doing to help the staff get ready and, and ease their comfort levels? And then to that, how are we handling substitutes? Because that, I think now becomes quite a dicey topic.
Yeah, substitutes, we're still in the process of, of discussing. Because that is a, a very important issue. You know, there's where the commissioner has said that if need be, some of the specialists that might be freed up could, could act as and fill in as a substitute. In terms of the return of the staff, I will be presenting to them a list of the personal protection equipment that we will be providing to each, each staff in each classroom essentially to make sure that they, you know, feel as safe as possible. And that will include, we are ordering a, a couple of hundred clear plastic shields also, which are important for those specialists who are in speech therapy so that the child can see the formation of the, of the mouth. And, you know, those work as opposed to a, a mask. And so we're ordering everything that the Department of Public Health, the CDC, our local Board of Health, Health Department has stated we should have on hand for the staff also. I want, want them to feel comfortable knowing that we're being responsible in providing them with the personal protection equipment that we're, we're obligated to provide them.
All right, I'm reading through. So substitutes is yet to be determined. And another question, busing, I know is yet to be determined because we don't know the capacity of the buses that will be allowed.
Right. The, the guidance on transportation, both yellow buses and vans, is expected to be coming out from the commissioner either late this week or next week. Now, it, it is late and I don't fault the commissioner because there's lots of discussions still going on, but it's very late to be having that type of guidance come out.
And so question, sports is yet to be determined, probably at this point, is the MI-
Yet to be determined. We think that certain sports like golf, you know, or ones that don't involve the projection of fluids, okay? And aerosolized, minimize aerosolized fluids could potentially be held. But contact sports, even music and chorus, we've been advised by the commissioner, we may not be able to provide music and chorus be, because of the projection of moisture from, from the mouth.
Interesting question. I think I've seen it twice now. With the little kids, K to two, we have K and one that don't need a mask and two does need a mask. So those schools, how is that going to look? You know, is it, is, it's clearly not as effective having only one grade in a school that's got masks on.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's clearly less our health matter and more a child development matter in terms of the ability to keep a mask on for, you know, for a protracted period of time. But, you know, that, that obviously is a concern that some will be without masks. We're going to ask families to, really talk to the children who have children in K and one and then another one and two. Why one is wearing a mask, why one or more is not wearing a mask? So I, I'll tell you, there are going to be a lot of speed bumps along, along the way here.
I mean, are we looking at six feet in the pre-K one and twos because they're not wearing masks? And the three feet is only okay if we're wearing masks, you know, it's, these are, I mean, I'm sure these are the things that you guys are discussing. But these are also the questions that parents are, are needing answers to before they can say, yes, I'll send my kid.
Those, those particular issues are still under discussion. You know, Courtney's been very important in those discussions, but also the school nurses. Also, you know, we know that children in, in pre-K and K and even grade one are a little bit more prone to sneezing and coughing sometimes without covering their mouth. And we want, we just want to make sure we have, try and have as many bases covered here as possible, whether it's distancing or, you know, some other form of protection for students and staff.
And the forum this week is the, the parent forum. Is that more sharing of information or are we hoping to listen more than share?
Hoping to listen more than share. It will be just a very brief overview of where we are. But the intent of the forum is to hear from, from parents in terms of their thoughts, opinions and suggestions. We know there'll be a lot of questions.
Okay, yeah, it, well, with six hundred people, yeah, signed up, there'll be a lot of questions. Is that a one-time thing or are we planning to do it? We don't really have time to do it multiple times to hear from parents.
Well, we, we don't be surprised if we do, if we do have another one. And I just have to make sure we give appropriate notification. But as I said, we will never, never be able to answer all of the questions on Wednesday night. But we will take them, kind of aggregate them into a group of common questions. And then to the greatest extent possible, do a frequently asked questions document to help provide answers to those questions.
Okay.
Couple of the questions on there I am able to address in my update. So I'm wondering, would this be an appropriate time just to give a quick, brief update on the teaching and learning?
I would love that and give me a chance to catch my breath on the question.
Okay, that, that's great. So I won't be able to answer all of the questions, but some of them that popped up certainly fall under the teaching and learning domain. So as you know, the superintendent had asked me to facilitate that subcommittee and it's been going very, very well. We've met three times with lots of collaboration and communication in between each session. And it is a fantastic group and we met most recently today. And I felt very excited that things are starting to take shape. Because when we first were handed this task, it felt like there were five different puzzles all in pieces put into one box and people say, kind of sorted out. And by the way, all of the, the puzzles are, are the same color. So you just don't know what's what and you have to piece it together. And in regards to Gloria's earlier comment about the fact that, you know, she may not have the medical background to be able to make those decisions, that's exactly where we're coming from. And so when we've got some, some families pushing, some families pulling, some staff members pushing, some pulling, we've really, you know, taken a deep breath, stepped out and said, okay, where are we getting our guidance from? And where is that information stemming from? So when it comes to Chris's other point, the, the adults versus the children, the medical professionals that the commissioner is collaborating with in, to develop his guidance documents are saying that in general, the infection rates are much lower in children. And they, it appears that they do not transmit the virus the way some others do beyond childhood, the adults. So I think they're really realizing now that in children, it's different. Might there be other documentation stating otherwise? Possibly. So we have to just continue to say, what is our charge and what is the information we have? And, and to try to not get too swept up in the sort of personal feelings of everybody. That will come into play once we set the, the target. So we did take the guidance and that's where the survey, the last week's survey came from. For the teaching and learning subcommittee, we needed to get some information after the June twenty-fifth guidance came out. After the June twenty fifth guidance came out. To help us understand what our charge was, which was to prioritize the in person option. While creating all three plans as we need to do and submit by July thirty first, as as Bill mentioned. So the in person plan is essentially everybody going back with. As much distance as possible with no less than three feet apart. And a remote option for students who are not able to come back and that means, as Bill said medically. Whether it's themselves or a family member or simply parents are just not comfortable. We will have a remote option for those students. Of course, the hybrid option and then we've got the fully remote. So we have determined that we've got to kind of prioritize this in school option. And that's where Bill has worked with the principals to look at the layouts, but. We also realize if we can fit that many desks and students at least three feet apart. There are still other things that we're gonna have to consider when you're talking about, do you have the capacity? That means lunch space where because students are not wearing masks, they have to be six feet at least apart. So where originally it was, let's have kids eat in their classrooms. That was before it shrunk down to three feet, so now we would have to find space for lunches to be served at six feet apart. That could mean multiple lunch locations or it could mean a lot more lunches. Lunch periods happening throughout each day. And then to the point that was brought up earlier, the substitutes also. If we have a certain plan in place for in person, do we have the capacity to cover teachers if we're out? So in addition to just space in classrooms, we're also looking at capacity in a broader sense also. So we know that the full return option could change. We know that. The plan has to mesh with each school and its its capacity and ability. We know that the MTA is meeting with the DESE, I think every Tuesday and Thursday or a couple of days each week. Throughout the month of July, negotiating their public school reopening proposal. So things could change in that sense as well, and then of course, COVID nineteen data within our community or state could change. Which shifts things too, so so we've got to be more nimble than ever and we are prepared to be to turn on a dime. If need be, so we're starting with this first phase of determining what full return looks like. And part of doing that was gathering information from families. About whether or not they would be able to do that, so some families expressed concern about. You know, how come hybrid wasn't an option on that survey? Because I'd prefer hybrid and again, taking the charge from the commissioner. Who absolutely collaborated with lots of different stakeholder groups, including medical professionals. Had said that you should start with the full. So it's kind of like a chicken or the egg, the superintendent had sent out communication with that survey. And the survey didn't have enough detail, but in order for our subcommittee to begin. Creating those plans or continue creating those plans, we just needed to dipstick to understand where parents. Were and how they felt about a full return with some of those basic guidelines outlined for them. So the survey's got another week. We already have over thirty six hundred responses and as Bill mentioned, I think with all of the schools, there's the average is sixty six percent. As of now, are looking for yes, full return, I will send my children. There are fifteen people, not percentage, people district wide who indicated. That they would be homeschooling or I'm going to a private school so far. And then the people who are saying they want remote is sixteen percent right now. And those who are saying they just aren't sure yet is also another sixteen percent. So when we were looking for this information and planning for a full return. We had to understand the remote side of things for those parents who opt not to send their students. Their child or children back to school. Our plan would look different if it's five students that we have to plan remote for or fifty. Or five hundred and it's looking at this point like it's going to be for the five hundred mark. And that will help our subcommittee begin to really understand. Once we do a full return plan and it is determined that we have the capacity. Beyond just the space capacitating each each classroom, then we've got to also plan for those remote kiddos. So once we have each of the plans, there's still obviously other phases. The details and logistics of each and some of you had touched upon. The the questions or thoughts that have come to mind that need to be considered and and they're. Far beyond that and with every answer, it seems to bring up two or three more, well, what if this or what if that? We have to make sure that the plan coalesces with the plans from other subcommittees as well. And then we also have to work with the union to work out an agreement for the pieces that are bargainable. So there are many different steps and we just continue to ask the community and thank the community for their continued. Patience and support and we'll probably have some additional surveys coming up. Because as recently as today, in this morning session. We were looking at full return and what it would look like. And then there was kind of this pivotal moment where we said, well, what if we did this? And maybe that would alleviate some of the pressure with thinking about masks for full days. With the lunch pressure and people sort of globbed onto that, so these are, these are the types of sessions that are really exciting. But it takes time. And then, as it was already mentioned, the commissioner has requested that we hold off any final decision. And I think there were one or two districts that had released their plans. And while we do have kind of a directive right now to plan for the full return and then have alternative plans if that doesn't work out. I I think that there are still going to be changes to come from the state based on. Data, based on negotiations and things of that nature. So we've got some really great ideas on the table, we're talking about. These are just ideas, nothing is etched in stone, but at the high school level, doing more of a block schedule model for students who are in school. Whether it be in part or the entire student body, so that there are longer classes with less transitions. We're talking about at all levels extending the transition time so that we can stagger them. So I don't know if you've ever been in WA during the the switch, you just kind of gotta hold your breath and close your eyes and hope you get somewhere. And we're looking at having specialists, the younger levels go into the classrooms. So that again, less surfaces being touched and shared amongst students, same thing even at the middle school level. So we do have a lot of balls in the air and I I think today, we we had a lot of ideas in the in between collaboration. Just it felt like the length went on for miles in terms of the comments and questions and. Ideas in our Google Docs, but today it began to to take a little more shape, so I am excited about. What will be coming, it's been a very fun project. Because it's something that is so unknown and learning and working together and builds the built, the group that Bill has built. And sort of sectioned us off so that we focus on a particular area. I think will get us where we need to be in inappropriate amount of time and it's never fast enough. It won't be fast enough for parents and it's not fast enough for us because we wanna know what we're doing. And somebody who's more on the type A side, it's very difficult to be moving through the fog and navigating that way. It's uncomfortable and it's kind of stretched all of us, but I do believe that toward the end of the month, we'll have. Plans in place and they may not all be fully agreed upon and and negotiated, but it will be some sort of. Framework with details that will help all of you kind of take a look and then offer your suggestions and opinions to Bill.
Thank you, Carrie.
One other thing, and we are looking at having traditional grading.
Okay, that's, you see those questions?
Yes, and the credit, no credit was because we we had to function in crisis mode. And there is, there was a lot of forgiveness during that time. But now with some pre-planning, even though it's it's still a short amount of time relatively speaking to complete what we've got to do. But we will be having actual grades, maybe we'll look to change the grading system and tweak it a little bit, but it will be. Much more robust than credit, no credit primarily for participation, which is what it was in the spring.
So I guess there's some clarifying information about the remote part and the online option for schooling. There's been discussion that it needs to be medically, you know, proven that you can't be in school. Some parents are like, what if I just don't feel comfortable? Is, you know, what, where are we with this? Cause it, we we've actually thrown out a couple of different options for parents and I think it's probably making parents a little jumpy. If they don't wanna send them and there is no medical reason that the student can't go, are we still going to educate the student?
Yes, and they will, they will sign up for remote learning, they do not need a medical sort of exemption from school to do that. If there's, if mom is simply uncomfortable sending a child to school, then mom can choose the remote option for for their, her her child.
And there there's some confusion about the, where we've been talking about immunocompromised students and family members. There seems to be a little confusion that immunocompromised are more susceptible and can get sicker with COVID. Not that that's a guarantee, but they would be known to be, have more struggles in fighting off the virus. Than another member, that is the definition of immunocompromised. That is not an automatic reason why they will or will not attend school, that is a family decision.
That's correct, that's correct.
And we are not at this time requiring medical documentation for the online option. So we're not breaking privacy, we're not just, you know, we're not doing any of that. What about specialists coming into the classroom? Before they are taken, you know, the students were normally taken out and now are we gonna have specialists go in and work with the kids? And is that kind of making, that that seems a little questionable on privacy and and interventions?
Special, so specialists in terms of what, so you're not talking about art, music specialists?
No, like if they need services.
Oh yeah, we have students being serviced in the classroom all the time. Tier two interventions, tier three interventions. If there is an IEP, we we did not dive into these details quickly, so I may be speaking a little bit premature. But if there is an IEP who says a child needs pullout, then that child, if we're in school, will be able to. Go to a separate setting, has been sanitized with a special education teacher. And the proper precautions will be taking place during those sessions.
And and may I just say, in in the space analysis, Avery, we've talked a lot with the principals about. Specialist instruction taking place in alternative areas and the possibility of of. Courses like art or music being essentially on a on a cart. Because we can't get too many adults in a single space and maintain that appropriate spacing. So we're looking at other alternative spaces in the buildings, in all of the buildings, for specialist instruction. And even even small, small reading groups with appropriately appropriately spaced.
The online or remote learning will look different, I believe Bill said more robust. Are we looking at synchronous learning for people who may be? Remote?
We, we have not been able to define yet what that looks like. There, there are some school districts who are talking about live streaming, I don't know that that would be a perfect fit for us. But it would be different than what we experienced in the spring. I'm just not quite sure yet what it is, because first, we needed the information from the surveys just to begin to get the groundwork. And then we want to finalize the big picture plans and say, okay, now what do we have left? What staffing do we have available to do the remote? But I can assure you that it's not going to be here, go do this work and on Monday and pass it in on Friday. And then there's no, there's no teachers, so we certainly want that to be robust as well. The tricky thing is, we've just got to figure out how to fit that in, because if all of our staff are teaching. Because we're returned, either full return or in some capacity. We've got to, you know, do some fancy footwork to see how we can get staffing to create a a nice program. For students who are staying at home.
I'm not sure who to answer, what are we, I mean, do we have contingencies, I assume are being built in for a student or a teacher? The tests positive during the school year and how are we gonna handle cold and flu versus COVID and? There's a crossover.
We are required, first of all, to have what the state calls as an isolation room, we're calling it a caring room. This is an area that particularly if a student presents symptoms. Just to be safe, we will be in touch with the parents, will move the student to that particular area. Which oftentimes will be adjacent to the nurse's office, cannot cannot be in the nurse's office. A staff member who presents symptoms would would go immediately home, they wouldn't go to the caring room. But the caring room is just just a holding spot for students until their mother or father can, or God, you can come pick them up. I'm sorry, I missed the second part of your, your question, Avery?
I think it was, it was just staff, oh, the cold and flu, how are we distinguishing? Whether a person has a cold, the flu, the COVID, I mean, are we going to distinguish? Or if you have any symptoms of any kind, you stay home?
Well, that's where I have been talking with Jeff Stevens. They're gonna provide us with some guidance that that we don't have at the present time, he and Gail Johnson. When I talked with Jeff last week about it, and he did give me the answer that it was, you know, it's kind of an individual case by case. But he did say he and Gail would give us more guidance to to be able to provide to our school nurses first and foremost. And to administrators and and the staff, we'll rely very much on the expertise of our school nurses and they are. They are excellent, well qualified nurses. What we won't be doing, because of the number of false positives and false negatives. Is scanning for temperature checks upon entering the building in the morning. That was once thought, we, in fact, we were looking at some very sophisticated equipment. That we were proposing to purchase under the CARES Act funding. But then the state, the Department of Public Health changed its mind and said, no, because of the false readings, we will not be asked to do that testing.
So no one needs to prove that they are negative with a a COVID test, staff or or students?
That's correct, as of as of right now, what we're asking, what we're going to be asking the parents to do. Which is in the commissioner's guidance is every day, check their children to make sure they are not presenting certain symptoms, okay? Before they come to school, so that it doesn't happen after they 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 come to the building.
Okay, and so if someone gets sick, will they be required then to stay home for fourteen days?
Well, only if they were to test positive. What we're looking at is if if there's a child in a seat that tests positive. Then the child in front, to both sides and behind that child are required according to the current guidance to to quarantine. Okay, the child who has tested positive has to isolate, even within their own home, is supposed to isolate for ten day period. Then a three day period beyond that with no symptoms, so. As you can see, there are many, many issues for us to have to consider.
Do you have to stay home?
That's correct, they do have to stay home.
But if if anybody is feeling sick, staff or student, they they do have to stay home. And the commissioner is also looking to adjust, even though this is fairly low on our priority list, given the situation. But adjust the chronic absenteeism. Knowing that we're going to encourage people to be out if they have the sniffles or a sore throat.
And so if they're home on quarantine for fourteen days or or more. Are they then switched over to remote learning during that time or are they simply out of school and then have to catch up?
Well, that's, that's a question that we we honestly have not come up with a final answer on yet. We have discussed it a little bit, but we just, I mean, there are so many other issues that we're trying to, trying to work out right now. We haven't finalized that particular situation.
All right. So someone's asking, I assume Ingrid, as I know she's on the call, I see her picture. Are we looking at what each of these three models is going to cost us? And will that be presented on, in two weeks at our meeting?
And as far as we can, I mean, you know, we are so far away from, from being able to cost it out right now. You know, like Carrie and Bill keep saying, we're just going to have to be flexible and, and keep going. I will do my best, absolutely.
No, sure. I, I assumed we were getting those kind of rough figures as we went.
Yes, and I, and I will let you know on the operations subcommittee. And it will, it will vary based on one of the three plans. We have additional resources needed and the cost of those additional resources. So that we can, we can provide our best estimate to you and to the town of what this is going to look like.
We have a question about full day K. Are we still planning on, on running full day K? Or are we going to keep people half day? Are we talking, are we still going to charge for full day? You know, I know we talked about some of those at the end of last year.
Carrie, has your group come to a final decision on that yet? You're muted.
We just want to be able to finalize what the plan looks like before making that determination. You know, if we went to a half and half model where students come in for a half day and, and leave for the second half of the day, for example, that might be something to consider versus going full bore back to, to school for the entire day. So we, I think it's a little premature to make that determination now.
Have we looked at, I mean, is the state looking at any kind of phased in? Like we start remote and then we try to go to hybrid and then we go back to school as, as it progresses?
Based, based on the medical advice that the commissioner has received, no. Although he has repeatedly said, look, if something changes dramatically, you know, it's subject to change. In fact, I asked him a question last week with the statewide call that he was able to answer. In terms of if there is a resurgence in Massachusetts like there is in Florida and Texas and Arizona and California and some other spots, would, would his guidance be subject to changing? He said, absolutely. But as of right now, he doesn't anticipate that.
And so we are also preparing, if we go back to school and then there's a resurgence, as you said, spinning, spinning at a moment's notice to a, a fully remote again.
Yes, and we would probably, it would probably take us several days just to, you know, maintain or adopt a, a different orientation, but we would have to do that.
And keep in mind, that will be one of the plans that we present is a full remote, assuming late October, we have to switch to that. In a day's notice, we'll have the plan ready to go.
Okay. Chris, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted, it was just a suggestion. I mean, so I know that, that DESE has the resources, you know, they're making recommendations. And like we by all means should be leveraging that, the, the knowledge, the research and the expertise. I just think, I, I personally would like to see us not start sentences with the commissioner prefers or the commissioner urges. Because they have their own, you know, they have to make recommendations for the entire state. And, you know, there's no guarantee that as much, as much resources as they're putting into this, that those recommendations are always going to be what's right for this community. And so I just personally, I have faith in the leaders of this community that we have the perspective and the knowledge to make the right decisions that's best for our students, our staff and our families. And so I just think that should be the guiding principle is what's best for our students, staff and families. We just, I just feel like we tend to go to the commissioner says, the commissioner says. And I think, Bill, you said that we won't, there's no, you know, recourse from the state if we don't do a full open. We're not going to be penalized in any way.
I, I don't anticipate that at all, Chris, I really don't.
That makes me feel better that we can go with the guiding principles, what's best for Westford schools. And not, and a little bit less, I mean, it doesn't mean that we ignore or we don't lean on that just as much, just I think also from a communication standpoint. I think that's what the community is looking for is more what's best for us and not what is the state telling us to do.
Well, the important thing is, the, the state has provided the baseline guidance. Otherwise, you know, if, if, if they didn't, I mean, we, we'd all be all over the place. But it's interesting what you said because in my introduction to the plan, that's one of the things that I noted a couple of times is that this is a plan that we're looking at to be right for the Western Public Schools and the town of Western. Yes, we will take the commissioner's guidance, but if there is some modification to the plan that we expect to be approved by the commissioner, then there will be a modification to it.
Is that what the 85% DESE and, and the rest us? Is that what they've sort of given us the 85% and now we're filling in the rest or?
No, the 85%. The 85% was previously hi- his intent. But then the week or so before that guidance came out, things had switched a little bit at the state level. So I say that we did not get 85 to 90% of mandate from the state level.
You know, keep it, one of the things I want to point out is really that it's the governor that's, that's really calling the shots here. You know, the commissioner is reacting to the, the gov- the governor's direction, certainly. And not to indicate that that's bad, but you know, I think the commissioner may have come out with some different guidance over the summer here. If, if we're not subject to the, you know, the governor's approval.
So, so I've got two, two points. One in, in response to what you just said, Bill, and what, what Chris said. I think it, it bears remembering where we started with all of this. Back in March, DESE and the governor's office were both saying that they did not recommend district-wide closures due to COVID. And our district made an independent decision to close our buildings to protect our students and our staff and our community. And every other school district across the entire state of Massachusetts made the exact same decision. And after every single school district in Massachusetts had made an independent decision to close their buildings for at least some period of time, some were one, some were two, some were three weeks, then the governor announced that schools would be closed in Massachusetts. Every school district had already closed. So I, I do think it bears in mind that that's where we started with this. And I think Chris's point that we have to make the best decision for our community and that's where our responsibility lies. And of course, we should take whatever guidance and expertise is available from the state, but we do have to make an independent decision. The second point I wanted to make is based on the survey results that have come in so far. You know, Carrie mentioned that, you know, there is this chicken and egg problem that I think you need information from parents to help plan, but parents need information from you to make that decision about how they would even answer that survey. So I do wonder if some of your preliminary results from that scur- from that survey are skewing positive and that parents that are anticipating a full return to school found an easier time to click that box. Because the parents I have received feedback from are parents who have said, I don't know how to answer this survey. I can't answer this survey because I don't feel like I have enough information because I am uncertain what's going to be right for my family. And I wonder if as we get closer to the 20th, those early results may change. So I would just encourage you to, that we may see more responses after tonight. We may see more responses after Wednesday, but those results may change and they may not hold up. So just please take the early responses with a little bit of caution. Because I think those who are uncertain have also not responded as of yet.
So was there a reason why we required student name on those?
Yes, because for, for those, we would like to know if a child is not coming to school, where they would have been scheduled, in other words, a classroom. And therefore that would help the principals readjust if we had a full return. But X number of students were requiring remote, we would deduct them for their respective sections that they would have been placed in. That would have helped the principals balance, balance numbers, particularly like in the Abbott School. Lori is looking at and has been looking at putting some lower numbers in smaller classrooms. Now, she does have several larger classrooms and having few or more students in those classes. So we needed the names and the grade levels to provide us with that information.
But that, that by answering that my child will come to school is not a final answer that they're being held to. And I, I
That's, that's correct.
Okay, so at the same time, if they say, no, I will not be coming back, you've now taken them out of class, but in the fall they say, well, okay, maybe it is okay. And now you have to put them back in. So I, I'm a little, you know, kind of confused on whether we're really holding people to these, these answers.
Well, that's why the, a lot of the principals have not made any final decisions on their sections yet by teacher. Because, because of the uncertainty and the need to plan for that.
All right, let's see what other questions. We, you, Carrie addressed grades. We will be having grades. We will not be revisiting last year's grades. I think we need to look forward on things. Any other questions? I mean, there's a lot of questions and I'm not sure we can get to them all because we do still need to finish our agenda tonight. And when we get the draft from you on the 24th, i- is that pretty much it done in, and there's really not a whole lot of wiggle room for, well, what if? That, that's kind of it set in stone?
Well, we'd like to take your comments. That's why we want to get it to you for the, the meeting of the 27th. We have four days after that between that Monday night and that Friday, the 31st, to make any adjustments to the plan and submit it to the state.
All right. All right. Are there other questions? All right. So I think we still have lots of questions. And I think as you and the, the subcommittees and working groups sort it out, I think it'll just be helpful to keep sharing this information. On the 24th, it's going to us and then it will be, will it be made public at that point too? On the 24th, because that's when the packet?
Well, if you feel comfortable with that. I mean, my approach is to present to you first, allow you to look at it and talk about it in, in public before we actually release it to the public. But I, you know, I'll certainly take your direction on that.
Okay. Okay, so if there are no other questions, committee, if you see other questions you think need to come in here, I think I've been trying to field them and there's a lot of them. And we didn't get to all of them at their specific levels. Well, oh, there has been a couple of questions about airflow and making sure we have good ventilation. And I know you sent an email. Can you just comment on that today?
Yes, I sent an email to the facilities director to make sure that all of the HVAC, the HVAC system in every building is running properly with the appropriate amount of air exchange in, in every classroom, because that's, that's very important.
Are there particular concerns about one school or another? Does WA not have good airflow?
No, we, we seem to be in, in good shape.
Okay. All right. I think it's time to move to the next one. I, we could be at this all night. So, but I feel like we're, we're at a good point. Let's jump over. Do you want to talk to the AD position?
Yes, hopefully just very briefly with you. The athletic director brought to our attention a while back that most athletic directors or many athletic directors in the state had an educational licensure in, let's see, administrative supervisor director. So we said, well, we'll, I think it's good to be consistent. It doesn't involve any change in his job status, any change in pay. It's just a qualification that is more consistent with his position statewide. What it will also do is just move him from the Middlesex County retirement system to the teachers' retirement system. And those, those two systems are, are pretty much interchangeable. And the reason I brought it to you is because any change, any change in his job description, as you know, needs the committee's approval. So no increase in pay, no indifference in job responsibilities.
It would just impact us down the line that now we would be responsible for retirement?
Well, it's, he's, he's in the Middlesex County right now. It would just shift the MTRS, middle, middle, the mass teachers' retirement system.
Questions on that? It's just moving it over. And this is more in line with our similar school AD?
That's, that's correct.
All right. Do I get a motion, you, we need a motion to approve the updated AD job description as presented? Do I get a second?
I'll, I'll, I'll second the motion, but before we vote, I guess I'll, I'll just add a couple of questions. It, so you're saying that, that this is a budget neutral decision in the short term? Given that there are retirement implications, is this also budget neutral with respect to the town's OPEB reliability over the long term?
I believe so, Gloria, because the, when a person transfers between retirement systems, it is pretty seamless. And I don't, don't believe there's any financial impact.
And so there's, there's no, there's no additional position being created here. There's, there's no, there's no functional change. You just feel like this, this job description better matches the job that's actually being done?
It's, it better matches with the qualifications of other athletic directors, many athletic directors in the state.
And does, does the, the current, well, you know, we know who, who we're talking about. It's the current occupant of that position have, have those qualifications and certifications?
Yes, yes, he does.
Okay, so did you second it? Are there any other discussions for the AD job description change? Okay. Seeing none, I will do roll call vote. And we'll start with Chris. Alicia?
Hi.
Ming Chen?
Hi.
Gloria?
Hi.
Val?
Hi.
Hi. So it's a unanimous vote to update the AD's job description.
All right, thank you.
Now on to diversity and inclusion. I'm going to let you start and I already have questions in the queue for you after update.
Well, I presented you with kind of a preliminary roadmap in terms of rekindling the activities of the diversity and inclusion team. I'll give you a little bit more specificity down the line. It's just that we are, as you know, based on the time we spent with the reopening, which is totally, totally consumed with that and have been for the last, you know, five weeks or so. But we're looking to have representation from every school on the diversity and inclusion team for this upcoming year. I'm going to send a survey to the principals sometime this summer, it'll probably be later in the summer, to assess what they've done in their respective buildings based on the training that they, we have all been through from the Anti-Defamation League. What the diversity and inclusion team members in respective schools have brought back to each building. I'm going to ask that each and require that each building have its own diversity and inclusion team that will focus on, take the system-wide work that the diversity On take the system wide work that the diversity and inclusion team, system wide team is doing. And infuse that into as much of what is going on at the local school level as possible. Um, I want our diversity and inclusion team by the beginning of the year in September to discuss professional development. We need to propose for this upcoming school year. Uh, whether it's on a system wide basis or individual school basis or both. Please know that I have not forgotten about infusing the, uh, what you, we have all endorsed is the. Western Public Schools Eight Can't Wait um, recommendations. Uh, we will certainly, although I did include those on this particular list. Uh, I will be talking to some of this current and former students of the WA. To um, present and integrate those into my recommendations down the road maybe later this summer. Um, we want to talk about, you know, constantly in our leadership team. About um. Making sure our actions, you know, words reflect a commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion across. The school system, very nice to talk about it. Uh, but unless you really do something about it and practice it. Um, it's meaningless in our, in our school system. Um, we're also going to have the Western Academy ADL students. Uh, come and talk with us in this system wide DNI team. And tell us from their perspective. In working with their peers and discussions with their peers, what we need to do to improve our efforts. To bring about more uh, diversity, inclusion, and equity in our school system. So just a brief uh, synopsis of what uh, looking to do and accomplish. Uh, that will be expanded upon as I have more conversations through the summer. Uh, based on the occurrences of the very tragic occurrences of the last month and a half across the country. Um, also open to your comments, your recommendations, and suggestions.
I'll let the committee start and then I can start with the questions here from the public. Any questions from the committee? Go ahead, Chris.
Um, are, I forget, I mean, aren't, aren't those ADL students on the committee? And if not, wouldn't we want to strive to have good student representation there?
Yeah, and I didn't mean to just to exclude others, Chris, we will, we'll include others, we'll, we'll include um. Most graduates if, if they're in the area and available to, to meet with us already.
No, what I meant, you, you mentioned having the um, ADL students come talk to the diversity and inclusion committee. And I was asking, aren't some of them involved already? I guess my question is, is there student representation currently? Well, I know the committee didn't meet this year, but is there student representation on the committee?
They will be on the committee, what I'm looking for is for them to convey to us. What they have experienced and heard from conversations with their classmates.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions or? So we have several questions asking and I think we've, we've reviewed this, why the DEI hasn't met? Um. One person um, would like superintendent to address this himself. Um. There, there's a lot, um, you just mentioned the ADL, are there efforts to ask ADL to be part of the task force? Um, so.
We, we haven't, uh, and I haven't asked them in the past to be part of the uh, the DNI team.
Okay.
Uh, that's not to say that they can't, um, one of the things I'd have to um. Check is, is, is there a cost associated with their monthly participation with the DNI team? And I look, I, I, and I think I've explained this before, I will take sole responsibility for the lack of meetings last year. It was just, uh, it was a very difficult year, I can make all of the excuses, but I'm the person responsible for that. And I'm the person responsible for rekindling this committee work also.
Okay. Um. What are the goals of the DEI team and what is the timeline for a tangible change?
Well, uh, you know, tangible change could take place in, in any one day. Whether it's in the short run or the long run, based on maybe conversations that, that are, are held with the students or between staff members. Um. You know, our, our goal is to, um, well, you know what, I should, I should have probably included our mission statement in there, in, in this and. The goal is to increase our cultural competency, the understanding and respect, and I don't use the word tolerance, I, I. Don't like the word tolerance at all, that makes it sound like we're just willing to put up with certain things. It's the respect and understanding and the depth of respect and understanding of different cultures, different races. Uh, what they experience that, that we may not be aware of. You know, one of the comments was from the Eight Can't Wait proposal was to um. Change or to look at the number of authors and if you have a certain uh, um, percentage of books in our libraries. From um. And humanities classes, I'm just reading it from diverse authors that we, we don't necessarily have at the present time. We want to take a look at. What curriculum content and the questions that are asked by, by teachers and even by students. Could result in some student feeling uncomfortable um, from a racial perspective. Now, two, two and a half years ago, as I've mentioned to you before, I had a wonderful meeting with the guidance councils, the high school with, with about. Twelve, I want to say thirteen, fourteen students. Who um. Were really quite eloquent in expressing to me and to the guidance councils. What they had experienced in, in classes that we would consider to be just normal classes. That just by the nature of either the question that was asked by the teacher. Or comments that were made by students made them feel uncomfortable. And so, uh, that was quite enlightening. And so just even nuances like that in terms of what is the curriculum content? What are appropriate questions to ask, questions that, that don't get into uh, issues of race. Uh, gender, equity, et cetera, and so. Um, lots and lots of things Alicia can remember from the conversations on the, on the committee from the past, the, the types of things that would. Make, whether it's students or staff, sometimes feel uncomfortable.
Oh, all right, so, oh, Sean, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I think just cruising through the comments, Bill, I think some of, what I'm recognizing is that some of the frustration is, is that. We, we're not getting going yet and obviously COVID's number one, right? And getting, uh, just getting a normal year going is, or this is. Getting a safe year going is our first priority, right? So I, I, I think um, in, in some of this, we have to temper expectations, at least insofar that. Um, it is, it's tough for us to me right now, right? And there's, there's a lot of things going on related to, on the COVID front. But nonetheless, I, I think that we really should commit to um, trying to get a team to meet before our next meeting if possible, Bill. Um, I know you have a lot on your agenda, but if, if we can do that, I think, um, I, I think our students have been demanding it now for. Um, you know, a couple of meetings and, and maybe we can, that's something that we can uh, assure them.
We, we will do that and um, I'm going to be in the next um, ten days or so. Uh, meeting with some current and former uh, WA students, just to get their perspective. And talk about what direction they think we should proceed towards, so. Uh, we will start that, that, it won't be as long and detailed as it needs to be, only because. We're uh, really up against the clock with the, with the education plan that we have to submit, but. There will be, there will be at least one meeting I'll hold.
Certainly, and, and I think, and another thing to point out, and I know Chris touched on this before, is that. Uh, outside of this, the school committee, where we've committed to doing some type of forum. Um, I'll be able to make it as uh. Uh. On point as possible, right? So we're, we're trying to do this right and, and hopefully that can happen either this month or next.
Yeah, well, that's the one, Chris, you, I think you said was standardly scheduled for the 29th of this month?
Oh, it is, okay, sorry, I missed that, Chris.
Well, I mean, that, that, that Nate got, date got floated in the past few days and so we were going to bring it here tonight, tell people to, to save that. And we're going to try to pull it together for, for that day, we wanted to wait until after the police forum that happened last Tuesday and um. And, but we want to do it before really, you know, August is in full swing, we, we're going to lose some young alums, I think.
Right.
College, um, and things are just going to be, you know, in the back to school crunch, so yeah, July 29th, that's a Wednesday. It will be virtual and um, more details to come on what that will look like, we will broadcast that far and wide as details come along and um. If folks from the committee or from the administration have thoughts, um, I mean, I guess I can be a point of contact for now, I, I don't, you know, I don't know. Where we'll move going forward, but um, reach out to me and we'll coordinate.
Yeah, and, and if we want to have another meeting in August, there is a possibility that with a lot of colleges and universities. Going remote, they may still be home, so that may work to our advantage.
Bill, what, um, so you talked about the ADL students, have you actually met with them to talk and hear about their experiences with the ADL? And have we thought about any other resources other than, we keep coming back to the students, the diverse students? Do we have any other resources that we hope to incorporate in the DNI?
Well, I'm going to, uh, that's one of the initial items that we're going to discuss at one of our first organizational meetings. Is kind of the universe of um. Of uh, information that we need to tap into, in addition to the, to the ADL. Uh, what I'm going to do is I'm going to contact uh, some of the other school systems such as Wellsley, uh, that has a full-time. Uh, diversity, inclusion, and equity coordinator and just to talk, talk with that person. Um, I know David Lucia well, the superintendent down there. And um, I'm going to speak with his DNI coordinator just to find out what organizations, what individuals. Uh, we can use to, to work with our students and work with our staff. If you recall, uh, last year, a couple of the ADL, uh, students in the ADL training uh, came to us and. Gave a presentation of some of the work they were doing at the upper elementary grade levels and.
Uh huh.
I have not talked with them this summer, uh, but I will be talking with them uh, this summer along with um, other WA students.
Um, okay, so do we have a timeline then? Because it looks like, as, as Sean said, most of the questions are, why haven't they met, when are they going to meet? Um, you know, we know that, that we had given a, a date of May um, for the, the committee to start meeting again. And then COVID came along and sort of changed, changed everything. Um, but I think we as a committee and the students and it sounds like committee, uh, community members. Are curious when, when we can really get a date and I understand we're working on, you're working on a reopening plan that is so complex. It, it baffles my mind.
Well, I'll, I'll send out something uh, within the next couple of days to the members of the DNI team.
Okay.
Uh, I'm assuming Alicia, Alicia, you're going to still be on the, on the team and we'll get that out this week. Uh, see what, uh, if people have, have a particular, I'll suggest a couple of dates and see if it matches their schedules.
Um, okay, and um. All right, any other DNI, I mean, I think right now the priority is just to get the committee back together and, and start a list. Um, I know there was one question about a DNI coordinator, um, and I don't feel that we're quite there yet. Um, we talked about a social and emotional coordinator, um, apparently there's been a DNI coordinator discussed. I don't think it's been officially brought to us at any time. Um, but I think right now we've got to get the committee going to determine if that's the best next step for things.
We'll meet shortly.
I urge the committee, our committee members and the um. Uh, superintendent and assistant superintendent, anybody else who can see the Q and A to read through these. What I'll do is I will capture everybody's comments, I think there's some really uh, good questions, tough questions and um. And pretty significant comments here that should be looked at, so I'll capture those.
Thank you.
Along with the, the comments from prior conversations tonight and make sure they get distributed.
I, I've been so impressed with the, the comments, the questions, the um. Really people are, are paying attention and asking amazing questions and it's so hard to get to all of them. Um. So I appreciate that, Chris, thank you, I've been trying to cut and paste as I can, but if, there's got to be an easier way to, to get them all. Okay. Um. All right, any other questions or comments on DNI? Okay, I.
Avery, I just wanted to add the last comment.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry that, that we, that we don't have a firm date yet um, for that listening forum. Um, I think we're, we're hoping that it will be July 29th. Um, and, and we do hope to, to firm that up and share that, as Chris said, far and wide soon. Um, and I know Chris and, and Bill and Alicia ha- have already been in contact with a number of the students. Who have been spearheading some of these efforts, um, and we do want to hear their feedback on what that forum should look like. How that forum can be a safe space for students to ask their questions and share their experiences if they're comfortable doing so. Um, and, and we do want to try and do that, um, even though we are juggling everything. Um, we, we are certainly trying to do that in a way that makes it accessible to our young alums. Because we do recognize that our young alums are in a unique position of being able to reflect back on their experiences. In high school with a little bit of perspective now that they've gone off to college and perhaps been in more diverse environments. And it, they have a little, a little bit of distance from their high school experience and have some valuable reflections. Um, and I think as Chris said earlier, and I do really want to reiterate this last point. We are not looking to tell you all the things we've done right, because I think we have made substantial efforts that are good. But we know we need to do more and we want to learn and figure out. What we need to do better, what can we do to do better?
Thank you, absolutely true. Um. Okay, if we are good with this, I'm going to turn it back over to Bill.
Well, this is um, a point periodically where. Uh, there is a transition of officers and statute requires that the superintendent temporarily run the meeting until there's a formal election. And the process usually entails uh, taking nominations for each position. And then holding a vote and once a chairperson is elected, then I turn the meeting back over to the new chairperson, so. That being said, um, I will take nomination, a nomination or nominations for the position of chairperson of the school committee.
I nominate Gloria Miller for chair of the school committee for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Gloria's name is in nomination, are there any other, is there a second, first of all?
I second that.
Okay, are there any other nominations for the position of chairperson? All right, let's take a uh, a full vote, uh, those who are in favor of Gloria Miller becoming the new chairperson for the 2021. School year, please signify by saying aye.
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 She is unanimous and Gloria, congratulations and the meeting is now turned over to you.
Okay, um, baby chair in action, um, didn't know I was getting the baton this fast. Um, I guess the next order of business would be to um, accept nominations for a vice chair.
I nominate Alicia Mallon.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? All in favor of Alicia Mallon being the vice chair of the uh, school committee for the upcoming school year? We say, or do we roll call or should we do aye?
Roll call.
Okay, um, Avery?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
And I am also aye, so that is unanimous. Um, next order of business would be to accept nominations.
Next order of business would be to accept nominations for the secretary of the school committee.
I nominate Valerie Young for secretary of the school committee of the twenty 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 one school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And any other nominations? Okay, all in favor will roll call. Avery?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, so that is also unanimous. We have a new slate of officers. Thank you to all of the outgoing officers and all of the extraordinary work they have done this year. I am not at all intimidated.
As I say, Gloria, congratulations to Valerie for the most cherished position on on this school committee.
Welcome to being the new kid on the block. You handled that gracefully. So our our next order of business is warrant approvals. And I believe I pass over to the new vice chair for, do we have a motion to approve? And it looks like we have a number of warrant articles that we'll be catching up on. And I think you're muted, Alicia.
Lesson number one is unmute yourself. Two I have in my email, and you, Chris, for sharing that. I have motion to approve payroll warrant number two, one, zero, three S P in the amount of two hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy seven, five hundred and thirty eight dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Roll call, Avery? I think I saw an aye. Valerie?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I'm unanimous. Next one on our list?
Motion to approve expense warrant number two, oh, five, six, S E in the amount of eighteen thousand, one hundred and twenty six dollars and eleven cents.
Second.
And roll call, Avery?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And and I'm also an aye, so that one is also unanimous. Next on the list, Alicia. Oh, you're muted. You just stay off.
Clearly, that's my learning curve. Okay, let's try that again. I pull up the actual date. Motion to approve school committee regular session minutes from June twentieth, twenty twenty. That was the meeting prior to town meeting.
Before before we go to minutes, and perhaps Chris is outgoing vice chair, you can let us know. Or did we have some backdated ones that we needed to do as well?
Yeah, let me see what we, did we get those in an email? I I forwarded what I had, but those might have just been today's. Yeah, those were just.
There are some on the agenda, so do we need to take those as well?
Just take them from the agenda.
Okay. Alicia, do you have the the agenda handy to do those from the agenda? I know those recent ones were just the ones that came in today for the most recent one, correct?
So the only one on the agenda that I see is the June twentieth one.
No, no, warrants still not.
Oh, warrants, okay.
Warrants that we need to approve.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry about that. I thought we had got, we'll go back to that. So we're going to start at the top.
Motion to approve lump sum payroll warrant. Oh, my screen moved. I'm sorry.
Oh.
Motion to approve. I'm sorry, Chris, what?
All right, I was sharing it. Did you need my shared screen to see it, or do you have it?
No, I have it. Motion to approve lump sum pay, lump sum payroll warrant two, oh, five, two, dated June twenty fifth, twenty twenty in the amount of five million, nine hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and seventy eight dollars and seventy five cents.
Second.
And all in favor, Avery?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I'm unanimous.
Okay, next. Motion to approve payroll warrant two, oh, five, three S P dated July second, twenty twenty in the amount of one hundred and thirty seven thousand, five hundred and forty two dollars and fifty seven cents.
Second.
And Avery?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I'm aye, so that that is unanimous. An expense warrant?
I'm sorry, was there a question mentioned?
We're doing them all together, so we don't have to actually roll call like ten times.
We actually have to read each one individually with the amount.
Okay, but can we only vote once?
I don't think so.
Okay, so we'll vote, read and vote every single time?
Yep, and we're just, I think it's cumbersome tonight because we're catching up, because we had that for a while. In a typical meeting, it wouldn't be this many, but we're kind of playing catch up because we didn't meet in late June. So Alicia, the next one, what is the expense warrant?
Yep. Uh, motion to approve expense warrant two, oh, five, three S E dated July second, twenty twenty in the amount of nine hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and forty three cents.
Second.
And all in favor, Avery?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I'm aye, so that's also unanimous.
Okay.
We have one set left.
Motion to approve payroll warrant two, oh, five, four S P dated June thirtieth, twenty twenty in the amount of twenty seven thousand, four hundred and fifty one dollars and forty six cents.
Second.
And all in favor, Avery?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I'm aye, so that is also unanimous.
Okay, motion to approve expense warrant two, oh, five, four S E dated June thirtieth, twenty twenty in the amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and sixty three dollars and thirty seven cents.
Second.
All in favor, Avery?
Aye.
Valerie? Ming Chen?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I'm aye, so unanimous. And do we have one more? Is it a payroll warrant? Or did we get that?
No, we we got the one after it. So let me read that one. Motion to approve payroll warrant twenty, one, oh, one S P dated July second, twenty twenty in the amount of two hundred and seventy one thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and fifty seven cents.
Second.
And all in favor, Avery?
Aye.
Valerie? Ming Chen?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I make unanimous. So.
So Gloria, just in case, can we just check with Ingrid? Ingrid, did we get them all? Because I know that was a little confusing.
Yes, you did. Thank you. So all, just so you know, all the ones that again, two, zero are from F Y twenty and the ones that are two, one are from twenty one. We had a a few extra closeout ones. The the more we can, you know, pay now through the warrants, we don't have to encumber, so it just makes for cleaner accounting. So thank you for all those votes.
And Ingrid, you'll send over what we need to sign?
Yes, it's just the the ones that you voted the very first.
Okay.
So, yes, I'll send those then to to Gloria. Or or wait.
Avery, Avery is still our authorized.
I think I'm still signatory.
Vote, or so you're going to stay the signatory, Avery? Okay, I'll send it to you.
Okay, um, next is minutes. I need a motion to approve regular session minutes dated June twentieth.
Some of it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor, Avery?
Aye.
Valerie?
Abstain.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I would be aye, so that's six, oh, with one abstention. And motion to, I need a motion to approve. And Avery, you've got the experience here. Can we do these as a bundle?
We can. These were approved at our last meeting, so we've approved these as a committee. But this is now releasing them to the public, and these have been redacted and vetted through the legal office. And so, yes, you can just read them as a as a group.
Okay, so I would need a motion to approve public, the public release for the previously approved executive session minutes dated July twenty nine, nine, twenty nineteen, August thirteen, twenty nineteen, October seventh, twenty nineteen, December twentieth, twenty nineteen, and January ninth, twenty twenty.
Some of it.
Second.
And all in favor, Avery?
Uh, yes.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Valerie?
Abstain.
And I would be aye, so again, that would be six, oh, and with one abstention. Last order of business, we will be adjourning to executive session. Alicia, do you want to do the honors for the motion?
Yes, indeed. Motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to Unit Eight collective bargaining. And an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position. The committee will not be returning to public session.
So a second?
Second.
And roll call to go to executive. Avery?
Yes, aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I would also be an aye, so we will be adjourning to executive session. We will not be returning to public session, so this will be the end of the public meeting. If anyone stayed through all of those warrant approvals, thank you for attending this evening. And we hope to see you on Wednesday night at the community forum about reopening. All right?
Thanks.
Thank you. See you all in the next meeting. Wednesday night at the community forum about reopening. All right?
Thanks.
Thank you. See you all.